Good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. If anyone's recording, would they make it known? Thank you. Our first item off on the agenda is the meeting minutes for September 24th. It would appear as though... Oh, the discussion went on after the vote?
Which one?
On the windship. We continued here and then there's two more comments from the public. Is that...
Yeah, they came in after the... In terms of the order, they were...
That was after the vote?
After the vote.
Okay.
So, from this side of the...
Say you, Bob. Is that leftover? Is that a new request?
That's number two. Is there a motion on the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from September 24th, 2018.
Last time I looked up, everybody was still reading, so I didn't ask. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is a minor modification for HEB builders on Spring Avenue.
We don't have them here at the time tonight.
Do you know what the modification is? Have they submitted anything?
Yeah, they have submitted plans to show the modification. They've identified it as a change in the septic system and changes in the elevations to decrease the amount of fill coming off the site. This has not been reviewed by the Board of Health as yet or gone through the permitting process with Board of Health. But they're proposing to revise the FAST Press B combination system with a FAST conventional trench system for the septic disposal.
Is that going to be one common system for the whole?
Yes, it will.
Ken, is that something we could slide by Charlie to get some input on that? It seems like we're changing elevations. Is that going to affect runoff drainage and all the other calculations they looked at before?
It will change. The grading will change to drainage.
I left a message for Jasmine in the office the other day. I think she sent me two PAs, one of them planned afterward and maybe one before. But it would be nice if they sent us an explanation as to exactly what they're doing. Otherwise, I'm going to be sitting there wondering, what were these changes?
Well, not just the West, Charlie. We depend on you for that kind of input because...
So, what I'm telling you, Mike, is that without some sort of a explanation even at this table, I'm not in a position to say to you whether it's okay or it isn't.
And they will have to have that information to get relief from the Board of Health.
They'll have to show the difference.
I assume it's a... I don't know whether it's a change that was brought about as a result of a report from the Board of Health, whether or not they saw something that they wanted to adjust because of cost. I don't know what the issue was. But it would be much simpler and quicker if we had a written explanation for them as to exactly what they're doing, outlining what they've changed. In that way, we can compare the plans without having to study the whole thing for two or three hours. It would be much simpler. And then I could give your board a reasonable explanation and recommendation for modifications. Without that, it doesn't make any sense to try and make guesses.
George, can we do something in place that they deal with Charlie and Ken before they come back to us? So, we're not sitting here twiddling our thumbs trying to make a decision.
Well, I'm just... Have they begun construction, Charlie?
Not from the best of my knowledge.
Oh, so...
Yeah, that would be my... I don't know how we can approve a modification if the design hasn't been checked off yet. If they've got this design all cleared, then...
They haven't... They don't have the design all cleared yet.
So, there's no point in modifying something that hasn't been approved yet.
If the planning office wants to contact them and say, "Get in touch with me. Write and give me a written description of what you're doing, citing the various things that you've changed and why you changed them." That would make it simple for me to review. And I could give you my report.
If it were a case of holding them up, I would say grant the modification pending this information so they could go forward.
I wouldn't recommend that, George, not knowing what it is.
Where they haven't put a shovel on the ground yet, doesn't appear to be that we're holding them up.
Even if they had, I mean, without seeing the documentation and knowing what they did, I think that's taking a pretty big chance.
Well, it wouldn't get signed without signing up, but okay.
Besides that, if you vote, even a minor modification, it goes to the town clerk. There's a 20-day appeal period. Then it gets recorded in the registry. So, you know, there's a little bit of a timeframe there anyway, so...
And then there'll be the question as to whether or not it's a major modification or a minor modification. So, getting the explanation first and getting the review may be an appropriate way to determine whether or not it's a major or a minor modification.
Well, I think they really have to get it... Board of Health puts their stamp of approval on this, correct?
They didn't have a Board of Health approval before they came here to get their special permit. I don't think that you necessarily need a sign-off from the Board of Health for whatever adjustments they want to make as far as the grading is concerned and so forth. The ultimate approval of the septic design is up to the Board of Health. And I never looked at that when I reviewed the plan anyway. I always defer to the Board of Health. So, I think it's just a matter of making sure that what's on the plan is consistent with the drainage, that if it does impact the drainage in some way, how does it do it? Simple explanation and discussion with them would solve a lot of those questions.
My office will contact the Board of Health as well, too, to see where the status of the project is.
Okay, so... I guess we'll... We need more information before we grant the minor modification. Next up is approval not required plan for JDC Wareham LLC 2419 and 2427 Cranberry Highway.
Evening, members of the board. Thanks for your time tonight. I'm Zach Richards with Bowler Engineering, representing the owner, JDC Wareham LLC. And the subject property is a shopping center located on the corner of Seth F. Toby Road and Cranberry Highway. Currently, it's three parcels. And they were broken up based on the previous use and previous buildings that have since been demolished. And so, the owner is looking to subdivide this property into three new parcels that make sense based on the proposed buildings. So, you can see here, I've shown the old... The old or the existing property lines in red there to be removed and then the new property lines that we're proposing in green. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Excuse me. What are the green lines?
The green, those are the proposed property lines, so the proposed subdivided parcels.
Make this corner dig up.
You have parcel one, parcel two, and then the remaining parcel.
There's another building right there now.
Pardon?
There's another building right there now.
I don't know.
So, you'll see two buildings on there, and those were the two constructed buildings at the time.
At the time, there isn't... There is another building.
There are, yeah, buildings currently under construction as well.
What's the building as the addition is going on Aldi's? That doesn't show on here either.
Yeah, that wasn't there at the time of the preparation of the plan.
So, that's going to be on two different parcels, huh?
No, so that will fall within the remaining parcel. That'll be on the same parcel, so... The Aldi and the... That add-on shell building will be on the same parcel.
Building here and this difficult one here.
You said the red line's a new property line?
No, those are the old, to be removed.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, if that existing property line isn't modified, that addition to Aldi's isn't encroaching on that property line?
On the existing one?
Yeah.
It does fall on the existing one, and that's why we'd like to remove it. So that... We've kind of gotten a request, too, from, I think, the town of Wareham that, you know, under the existing property lines and layout, it doesn't really work. So, they're... Yeah. They kind of... The town knew that we were coming forward with this plan. And it just took some time to pull together, but...
What's going to happen with all the parking for the two green parcels? They share all that parking in the middle, right?
Yeah, but we've also... I guess I can pull out the proposed site plan. Just to help you visualize.
The parcels being created for the sake of a lease, or...
Yes, yeah, essentially. I think that's the case.
Yeah, that's what they always say.
So, here's one of the buildings here. And it's still got a good chunk of parking there. And then this is kind of its own parcel up here.
So, that parking you're seeing on that first piece you just pointed to, there's enough parking here to support whatever's going to go in it suddenly?
If there isn't, then there'll be an agreement. You know, we expect that there may be need to be a parking agreement between the two parcels and uses.
But that's not... That doesn't exist at the moment?
No, we're still figuring that out. I think, yeah, there'll need to be some easements and agreements in place. But we don't feel that that needs to be done with the land, you know, A&R subdivision action, that that's done a little cleaner if it's a separate process and we pull together the agreements and easements as needed separately.
So, the addition that we see on the Aldi's currently, it only represents that small section on...
So, that's the... Yeah.
That's what you're seeing there.
Still are here.
And then you...
So, this is future.
What is going in that small building?
Alongside Aldi. It's not determined yet. It's basically a cold, dark shell. So, the hope was the owners building it out with hopes of attracting a tenant once it's constructed.
That's why they want this line drawn, because they're going to come over here.
Are they not the same scale, these, are they?
No, this is a different scale. This is taken from the construction set, so... Where is the surveyor prepared the A&R plan?
On that set, it appears as though the lower parcel splits the driveway, but it doesn't seem it so on this set.
Yeah, I don't believe the driveway is shown on the subdivision plan. I think it's for the most part just the property lines and features and...
I think those are the old ones?
Yeah. Yeah, those are the old curb cuts that have since been closed.
So, which one's the real one?
The one on that plane up there.
So, this is the A&R plan that just shows the property lines and everything. And then I brought along this site plan just for reference so you could see where the buildings as proposed would fall.
Where along the line was it decided to build a building that would land on top of a property line that hadn't been... It was built in anticipation of approval?
Sorry?
Well, I'm looking at the addition that's being put on Aldi's now.
Yeah.
And it sits on top of the existing property line.
Yeah.
I'm just curious how that came to be. You know, how do you... How do you get a building permit to put something on top of a property line that hasn't been moved yet? I mean, was it anticipated somewhere along the way that that was going to be granted?
I think that those were anticipated to be removed, but the A&R plan was not filed to consolidate it to one parcel. So, we're trying to correct that now.
What is missing in your process here? It really is, you know, when this thing was put before us before with the seven buildings and one up in the top, I believe all the calculation for parking was for the square footage that you have on that whole lot, the whole workout.
That's correct.
So, now you're breaking it up. So, the one down the bottom, the one on 28?
Yeah.
Building that's under construction on green. Is there enough parking space to support the square footage in that building? There is.
Yeah, there's a required parking space of 13, and we're providing 28 there. So, that's 4,000 square feet retail, 300... One space for 300 square feet would be 13 spaces.
Those are the numbers we had worked out before for that. Do you remember, Ken?
No, I don't. We have the file here, though.
I just want to confirm that it does meet all the setbacks and required frontage and lot size for the zoning bylaws.
I just have the A&R file here. Just have the A&R file here. For an A&R, though, you don't look at the zoning conformance within the property. I pointed out to Zach that there's probably going to be a modification of the special permit that was issued for the property because there are new property lines involved. But an approval not required is done just on the basis of frontage area and the street that they...
Well, another thing...
Not even on that, because these requesting parcels, not lots, so...
Another thing with hearing not required is you can't put any stipulations on any conditions.
That's right.
So, in other words, we're giving them carte blanche, do whatever they want. When you guys came originally, there was 10 pounds of stuff in a two-pound bag. I think we stayed at that from the beginning. So, you guys come back and you've modified it twice already, and we still don't know where we're at because nobody knows where we're starting from. Is that confusing?
We're just trying to set up a couple parcels that make sense for the development that we put in place here, and that's being constructed. I realize that, you know, it seems that an A&R plan to consolidate the entire parcel should have been in place before. But we're seeking to file an A&R plan now to set up the property as it should be set up based on the development that's going in out there.
So, it's still one lot with three parcels?
I believe parcel and lots used... There are three lots, and we're looking to create three lots. Parcels used... I think it's meant to be a lot interchangeable.
But it's not.
George, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
I would think that for it to be a correct plan, that it should show the buildings that are on site, including the one which is on parcel two, as well as the other one which is on construction side of the existing AutoZone building. Those should be shown. I mean, they're there physically on the ground. So, it's, I think, a requirement if you go back into your rules and regulations, it's probably one of those features that's required to be shown. I can understand maybe parcel one, where it says Phase One parcel. I'm not sure, but I assume that you probably are negotiating with an owner that wants to have the property under himself. It concerns me a little bit about Phase Two parcel, not knowing what the setbacks are with the existing building and so forth. And clearly, once you create property lines in there where people who are going into the shopping area have to cross those property boundaries, if that parcel gets sold, then you're going to have to have cross-agreements to allow people in and out, which requires... Which could require a modification of the special permit. I agree with the town planner on that. But at least you should show the buildings that are on site today. Get the abutters right. I think what you've got there for William and Teresa Rogers and Shannon Buckingham, those are all combined into the Liquors and Moore property now, so I don't believe those abutters are correct. Not sure whether the deed's been put on record yet, but the building certainly is under construction. That's on the piece that is in the upper left-hand corner of the plan. I don't think that the elimination of the property boundary in the interior of it matters much. I mean, they're trying to consolidate a little bit. I don't have any problem with that. But without these other buildings being shown, you're showing an incomplete plan, incomplete site conditions.
I'd like to point out that it is... We are just looking at the property lines, though. And we are... We did look at the buildings within each parcel to ensure that they conform. And I know that's... I think that's on us to provide. And ultimately, there will be an as-built plan that will be prepared for the property once it's all fully built out. And that can be provided to the planning board as well at that time, showing the conformance.
Chairman, you're being asked to endorse the plan under the subdivision control law, not required. We don't know without seeing what the setbacks actually are for that Phase Two parcel. I haven't seen an as-built plan for the existing building that's under construction as to what the setbacks are there. I assume it conforms. They got a building permit, so I'm sure they have an as-built foundation plan from the building inspector.
Does this have to go back to ZBA with a granting authority?
That's what I believe it does.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
The gray building that I'm at the bottom on the left, does that exist? Is that supposed to represent what's on this?
Yes, that's right.
Could you tell me the dimensions of that, please? Here, here's a scale.
It does look a little bit bigger.
Looks a lot of it bigger.
Almost twice.
I believe what's shown here is the foundation as built that were done as part of it, so it, whereas this is, you know, the actual building, so there may be, there may be slight, slight difference. Showing about 120 by 153.
I measured 120 by 155, but they look so different. What am I looking at?
It's not the same scale, so this is...
No, 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 the proportion, may I get a boost of journal?
I can bring it over.
I stand corrected. When you look at it from this point, okay?
Have COs been issued to all the buildings that are under construction or...
No, no. So they just went into construction. It was just this fall, so that's why, you know, we haven't yet shown them on the survey plan. So none of those have COs yet, I don't believe. The AutoZone and the Aldi, which are shown here, are operating, and they're under COs right now.
So are you creating parcels for the purpose of land leases, or are you intending to transfer ownership of these?
I'm not 100% sure. I think the client's... It's one or the other. I think it's, I think he intends to maintain ownership, and it's purely for the lease, to create the lease areas, but I'm not 100% sure.
Well, I'm concerned that you could drastically be changing the parking requirements overall if there's gonna be a transfer of ownership. I know it was pretty thin on the parking, on the initial approval. Granted on full build-out, and I think the addition of a fast food restaurant going on parcel one was not in that calculation in the initial approval.
I think we were pretty well overparked, actually, initially. We're showing the drive-through at about 52 seats, which at one space per five seats is 11 spaces.
I think the initial submission was for a drive-through back there, wasn't it?
Yes, it was. And so we had to seek an amendment or amendment to the site plan review and also the special permit, which we received, what was it, this summer or...
It was this summer.
Yeah. So we've kept parking in mind as best we could and tried to break this up so that, you know, the parking spaces did make sense. It was difficult as well, you know, the impervious coverage value was pretty tight, but we did meet that as well. So we did everything we could to meet the zoning for all the properties, and I think we did that well, keeping in mind that, you know, we will need some access agreements and such in place.
So is this action gonna go before the ZBA, or is this...
Yes, I believe it does have to go before the ZBA for modification of the special permit. And again, for the approval not required subdivision, you can't really consider zoning compliance, except for a frontage and area.
Well, that's where I have the problem with the labeling of a parcel.
Calling it Phase One Parcel and Phase Two Parcel isn't necessarily the assessor's records.
You know, am I, you know, to do this, if there is a transfer of ownership, they'll have to come back and create a lot, correct?
They are creating a lot with this.
That's what they're doing.
They're creating three lots.
They've labeled them parcels, which in my mind is a different...
I don't really think that makes much difference, George. The fact that they're separating it out with a separate area, that it meets frontage requirements, it's got courses and distance that define it, that's a lot in terms of, you know, what the statutory requirements are. But in my view, the plan's incomplete because it doesn't show the structures that are on those lots. It may not be an issue to be discussed here with respect especially to Phase Two Parcel because you're gonna have a building on there. If it's a separate lot, then it might be subject to different setbacks, different buffer zones. It's commercial to commercial, there's setback differences there for buildings, landscaping and so forth. And that all comes under the provisions of the special permit, in my view, that was issued by the Board of Appeals. But it still should show the buildings that exist, and currently, there are two buildings shown that don't exist on this plan.
Well, again...
Actually, three structures.
Yeah, one under construction and two that are physically up, and, you know, they're putting, the roofs are on, they're facing them and everything, they're there.
I mean, it is an ongoing construction site out there. You know, I guess...
Do you know why the little corner is out of parcel two?
It's, sorry, say that again. Oh, the corner there?
It's for parking.
It's a row of parking spaces, so... There's an island there. And it's basically, we captured the one row that's in front of that building, and the other row is more associated with the Aldi, so we've left that off. But I think it's tough to capture everything on an ongoing construction site like this. I mean, every day, there's things that are changing, there's new buildings going up. So I asked, I guess, that the board, you know, consider this complete for when it was issued. And I think, you know, per Ken, we're reviewing against, you know, providing the frontage, which it does, along a public road or highway, and provides the required lot areas.
Where's the primary access gonna be, entrance and exit's gonna be for parcel two, off of 28?
That will be off of Seth F. Toby Road there, opposite of the Walmart, so that's... That's this driveway entrance here.
When they approved your fast food drive-through, did you decide plan for that?
Yes.
So from an A&R standpoint, everything is there, but from the site plan, it's not.
I don't think it is, George. If you can bear with me just for a minute. Where are the density regulations?
We looking for the requirements of the plan, Joe?
Yep. "All lots created for building purposes after the effect of the bylaw shall be shaped so that they can contain within the buildable upland an area circle of a diameter not less than the frontage requirements of the zoning district within which the lot is created."
That's the shape factor.
How does that fit for Phase Two, Three, Phase Two? In this case, it's gotta be 150 feet. Will 150-foot diameter circle fit in there? I don't know.
I would... I'll get a scale up there. I'll tell you in a minute.
It won't.
No. The width is 140.
Side to side, it's 140 feet.
140.
So it doesn't comply in terms of the shape factor, but again, without the building there, it's a physical component of the lot.
What is your opposition of showing the building on the plan? It's there, it's structurally there.
Well, yeah, but it was ju, it's just, it's under construction now, it was just put up at, you know, at the time the surveyor didn't have, doesn't have that information, so they would need to, you know, go out to the field, survey it.
The footprint of the building's been there for a month.
Or more.
Yeah.
So just poor planning on the surveyor's part, or...
I mean, the surveyor prepared the plan...
This was done back in April.
This says 9/20.
Building wasn't there then, I don't think.
Date on this plan is September 20.
The field date for April 21.
That was back in April. And we essentially, we prepared this plan, and we were kinda waiting to get it out. We wanted to make sure we were through the ZBA first, and now we're, you know, presenting this to the board. So yes, the field date was...
So basically, you guys are like Wendy's, you want it your way, right?
Sorry?
You guys are like Wendy's, not, not the...
I don't think that was Wendy's.
Burger King.
Well, I don't go to the fast food places. You know what I, you know who I meant.
But based on Charlie's last statement, this is a non-conforming lot.
I think per the subdivision control law, it does meet everything required, though.
Not for building purposes, and you got a building on it. It's gotta conform to the zoning bylaw for building.
But I don't think that's part of the A&R process.
Yes, it is.
Conformance with zoning is not part of the A&R process, it's part of the zoning compliance.
It leaves that a planning board cannot endorse a plan that does not conform to the current zoning bylaw when there's a building on the lot.
So you need some information for us before you go to Board of Appeals. You're gonna have to come back with something that's updated and that meets what we're supposed to have. You know, we can't just rub a stamp just to let it go out the door. You can't even get a lot shape factor in there.
The lot, we can accommodate the lot shape factor, but we need to be all the information on the plan to do it.
Does the lot shape factor have to be upland?
Yep. Contiguous.
Because here now, we have 125 feet. Because there's a wetland buffer, is that... Would it be measured from there?
No, I think that buffer is probably upland. It's just within the 100 feet. Because there is construction there.
We don't know that. You can't tell by this print where that building is compared to that, right?
You say by drawing those lines, does it change the relationship of the building to the wetlands from what it stands right now?
Some ways in your plans, your engineer must know where that building foundation is in relationship to that 100-foot buffer, wetland buffer that's on that parcel two. We have no idea where it is.
Can't define requirements for an A&R.
Yeah, that was part of the conservation commission filing, was the building locations. Yeah, this is just the A&R plan, though. So the conservation commission does have, you know, a plan filing that shows the building with respect to the buffer, and that's part of an order of conditions under their purview.
I think we have two issues here, Mr. Chairman. We gotta make this one parcel to get that addition going on to all these in compliance here. That, before these other two parcels get considered, we can get this into one parcel.
I don't thi, I think you could do that in one action, which is what you're seeking. You just need to put all the information on the plan that's required. Which means location of all man-made structures and significant natural features, including existing buildings, structures, rock outcrops, deep slopes, all that stuff that you already have on your site plan, just, you know, your construction plans.
Yeah, I guess the hope was, you know, once these things were built, then we would go back and do the survey all at once rather than kinda piecemealing it, so... They're still working out there. They're still gonna be working on sidewalks, you know. It's been an ongoing process, so...
So when they're all built, you're gonna come move the lot lines again? Is that what you're telling me?
No, no, this would be where the lot lines are going.
I'd like to see the buildings that are there referenced before we consider anything.
Well, George, what's your pleasure? We're not gonna do this tonight because you don't have the shit, I mean, the stuff. I didn't say that, Bob, I'm sorry. I've been good for years.
Yeah, let's, updating it with what you've got on the lot now and show you structures and curbs and parking areas, and then I think it can meet the requirements.
So you wanna see all the parking, curbing, everything, walkways for the site, just the current condition, like the survey, as the survey that...
I know they have...
Is that typically shown on A&R plans? I mean, I'm just...
I just read part of the requirements for plans submitted.
Existing conditions are required as part of the A&R plan.
To show it across the site?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, I think there is also another building approved to go between the new one on Seth Toby and AutoZone? Is that, memory serve?
Yeah, there's another building.
But that's not coming anytime soon, so you wouldn't have to...
It's under construction now. The only one that was approved is the one that's under construction now.
Was there a gap between the buildings, or was that one lot?
It was separate.
Yeah, it's a standard...
There was a proposal at one point to expand that building.
Right.
The one that's up goes back to the original approval.
Then there's a modification on that last driveway on Toby Road, closest to the package store. It's supposed to be used for egress into the package store.
That hasn't been done yet, though, Mike. That cut hasn't been made yet.
Yeah, but the property owner did agree that, you know, we heard that that was... Yeah, but the property owner did agree that, you know, we heard that that was what the town had wanted, so he...
You guys got a lot of things going on. You must know what quite a bit of it is. And like I said, we can sit here all night long and go back and forth, and I think the majority of the board, you're not going to sway us. We need the information.
Okay.
Go back to your work, come back another day.
I understand.
Hopefully, you've got the stuff in line.
So, what do we need? Can we just recap? Or for me, what needs to be added?
Show buildings, driveway cuts.
Parking layout.
The parking layout.
Does parking layout need to be shown? Because it would be part of the special permit review. Parking isn't necessarily identified in the subdivision rules and regulations. What buildings are as a content of the plan?
Buildings, sidewalks, curves, any drainage structures. How do we want to handle this submission?
At this point, I think if you're not going to endorse it, you have to reject it and allow them to refile.
Would it be simpler for them just to withdraw it?
Yes.
Okay, I guess we withdraw our submission.
That way, you wouldn't have a denial, so...
Does that matter for the timeframe, withdrawing versus reject... rejection, or...
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
Makes it easier if you simply redraw it. Withdraw it and just put the information on it and come back. You shouldn't have any problem then, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, if you officially withdraw, can you supply me with an email tomorrow, so stating?
When you went here when this came before us, Mike, you wasn't on the board then, was you?
No.
Just when they came, Chris told them they wanted 10 pounds of shit in a two-pound bag. After they approved, they come back. They want to add on to the buildings.
Now, regarding the public hearings, Ken, we had already...
Well, you have a tripartite agreement.
Oh, I didn't see that. Pass over that. Tripartite agreement for Bay Point. Looking for a partial release?
This is the second partial release for Bay Point. And Charlie Rowley was a team player and got out there, rushed out and reviewed.
By way of explanation, so the board knows what we talked about today, I did get the request, the backup to that top sheet, George, is what I received from Chris Reynolds from Stone...
Stone Street.
Stone Street, there we go. He asked for additional release of funds on the erosion control, a reduction in the amount that's still out there for the stumps and the tree removal, and also for stockpiling a loan. I went out there and discussed it with him today. He also asked if he could get the percentage of the overage for each item back. In other words, for each item that's listed there, if you recall, we tacked on a 50% amount as a contingency amount. After going out there and looking at it, and it's in my letter, I had asked him previously if he would give us a plan that shows how much of the erosion control barrier had been placed with respect to how much was actually provided. I got no response on that. Then I got a response late this afternoon, after I had mentioned it to him again, that it was on the plan, the original approved plan. Well, the total amount is, but I still don't know how much was put out there because that's not been marked. In addition to that, the portion of Cahoon Street, which is at the beginning of that phase, which is up on the golf course, from there to where the condos are, they widened the shoulder out because they were going to widen the existing pavement to Cahoon Street. The shoulder where they dumped all the dirt against the pavement is eroded, based on the soil that they put there, and the fact we've had so many storms, it just washed over the pavement and created big gullies. Cahoon Street is covered in dirt, almost from one end to the other, where they've been moving trucks back and forth. I consider erosion control and sediment control to be that, as well as the installation of a sediment fence. So, my recommendation, my letter, is don't release anything on sediment control, but it should be held there for the remainder of the project. After everything's done and they swept the streets and the paving's done, things are done, then you can release the remaining amount on the erosion control. With respect to the stumps, the stump pile is there, so I'm suggesting that you still need to retain that. They have removed the logs. Those are gone. What logs remain are from the lots themselves, which are not a part of the security. You haven't posted security for the lot clearing, just the road construction. So, any logs that might be lying around, they cut off of the particular lot they're building on, that's on them. They're going to have to get rid of it anyway. The third one, which is the loam pile, that's all been stockpiled. It's off the site. I asked Chris today, are you doing any more clearing? Any further trees have to come out with the construction of Bay Point Drive and the widening of Cahoon? He said no. So, on the basis of that, I'm saying you can release the amount for the loam stockpiling, which they did, along with a 50% value of that. And I put the amounts in the letter. You can take action on that letter as you see fit.
Is there a second item for loam and seed after the final grade is achieved in the road construction?
I don't know. I got to look.
Charlie, what are they going to do for stabilization before the cold weather comes?
Well, that's all a part of erosion control, to my view.
Because if we recall last year, that place was a nightmare with the snow and everything else.
There, yeah.
They've got all kind of divots and potholes and washouts. Now, that place is going to be a war zone by winter time.
To answer your question, George, there is an item in there, re-loam strips and shoulders. It's an awful lot of money, but that item was loam strip stack on site for $9,300. That's done. And it certainly includes a lot more loam than what was stripped off the edge of the road. I mean, they stripped all of the lots as well, so that whole stockpile takes an awful lot of material. But the stumps are still there. They haven't ground those up yet. So, even though they have an item there for grinding of stumps, I'm not recommending that you reduce anything on that until that's done.
There is a estimate of grinding the stumps in the stock area, $4,500 bucks. Is that...
Yeah, which is fine, but they haven't done it, so... That's all it is, is an estimate. And this estimate that we're talking about is simply for that portion between Station 13 and 30. The first 1,300 feet, you may recall, is from Onset Avenue in Bay Point Drive around the circle and to Station 13, which is near the clubhouse. So, we're only talking about that portion of the loan. I've sent a copy of that to Chris Reynolds, so that he knows what's in the letter. And you said you didn't receive it, but I'm hoping he did.
Yeah, I am, too. My email didn't... Garbled Charlie's email, so didn't receive it.
Doesn't like receiving them, I guess.
So, if there's no questions, any concerns? Do you think releasing the contingency at the same time is advisable, or...
I don't have a problem with the loan pile. It's been stocked. I mean, there's no reason why you need to hold on to that. With some of the other items, there may be. You'll notice I haven't suggested a release of anything on the other two yet. I don't know that I would do that. You may request it again. But some of these things, we don't know yet what's going to happen. There's still plenty of work to do, so... The cost estimate that we're working with is the construction cost estimate that they provided back in March. And those items are what I'm taking the numbers from. I'm not even looking at the 50%, except in this particular case, he requested it. And the loam is stockpiled. I mean, there's no reason why that can't be taken out.
I just don't want to come up short if we have to go ahead and finish.
I know. That's why I'm looking carefully at what he's asking for in those particular items, where he might be looking for that 50% factor. There may be things, especially when we get into the drainage and the sewer work and the water work, where things need to be fixed or changed or adjusted. Once they're in the ground, there may be some things that take place. Maybe there'll be some sediment issues or something like that. We don't know. So, I would be very cautious about things like that, the paving, all that sort of thing.
It's the board's pleasure.
I think we should go with Charlie's recommendation.
I agree. Second.
Is that a motion and a second?
Yes, it is.
Do you want to read out what the values are, so it can be put into the minutes?
He has recommended the release of $9,300 for item three, loam strip stack on site, including the 50% town contingency increase of $4,650 for the same item, for a total amount of $13,950. Motion and a second, no more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Now, the public hearing zoning articles for town meeting, you...
There was continued discussion. I had a conversation with the building commissioner, the inspector of inspectional services, and revised Article 14 and Article 15, which is the unregistered vehicle and outdoor storage and the dimensional standards for small lots. The board, as you may recall, had made a determination on these ones. I wanted to confirm that for the motion for town meeting. We have a continued hearing on the Tremont Nail Factory redevelopment overlay bylaw. And we have a new public hearing, scheduled public hearing on Article 16, which is the amendment to the sign, the zoning Article 11 sign bylaw. I have extra drafts of the of the articles as they're revised, that we can discuss.
All right, on 530, you still want to strike the word camper to be consistent?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. At the last meeting, did we not vote to move both Articles 530 and 535 for further study until spring town meeting?
I think I think we agreed on 535, but there, at that time, they were already printed in the warrant. So, we'll have to do it in the form of an amendment or do it in a motion.
To remove it?
Yeah, because they're already, they already exist.
And I understand that something less is okay, so we can remove it.
But in my notes, I I thought we were going full over 530. Am I mistaken?
The vote we took 500 was to remove 530 and 535 for further study. And that's in the minutes we approved.
Okay.
So, what the discussion was since then, and this was before the finance committee as well, was to try to find some wording that worked on the unregistered vehicle, boat or trailer. Because what we don't want to have is that somebody has two kayaks in their front yard, and they could be subject to the enforcement by the building commissioner. But this is a problem that all coastal communities deal with, as to what is, what should be regulated in terms of storage in the front yard, especially with boats. So, the question is, is there something that you'll feel comfortable with? It would allow more than one unregistered vehicle, vessel, trailer, camper, or parts thereof to be ungaraged and less authorized than written by the Boris Lekman to be enforced?
I think the only way you're going to resolve that is either in the definitions or in a statement stating vehicles that are legally required to be registered.
Well, the problem is that a vessel means a watercraft by Coast Guard definition, and all watercraft by the state are supposed to be registered, and that includes canoes, wet bikes.
No, powered have to be...
It's not what the website says.
They're looking for more tax dollars, are they?
I'm assuming so.
I think they may have to be titled, but I don't, didn't know they needed to be registered.
The state website that I checked today says that all vessels have to be registered.
Kayak and a canoe is considered a vessel?
Yes. By Coast Guard definition, all watercraft, anything for transport on the water surface.
That includes inflatable pool toys.
A little pink duck.
We have the pink duck. So, what is the request here? The finance committee is asking for this to be put...
No, the building, the building commi... The inspector of, the director of inspectional services was asking for this to be provided in the zoning bylaw so that he would have more tools to enforce junk in the front yard of of properties in town.
So, you're asking us to reverse the decision from the last meeting to remove it, then?
To postpone it to the spring.
Do we get a commission from the registry for doing their job for them?
Registrying boats.
What would it help if we had a subcommittee to sit with David and work this out thoughtfully rather than being rushed to think of definitions here? I always have trouble having to make a decision, you know, when something is presented unexpectedly. I wasn't expecting this discussion tonight because it was tabled, but I'd be happy to participate with another member of the board, with you and David, and come up with a thing that the board would accept, a definition that the board could accept. But for me to sit here and try to think of the language, I withdraw.
I would have to agree.
And I volunteer if, to be in the subcommittee and sit with David. I already got in trouble with David once, you know, so...
So, you're looking for backup, huh?
Yeah.
I'll participate. I'll participate in the committee, too, if it gives us more time to think through it more thoroughly and prepare it for spring rather than jamming it in.
it more thoroughly and prepare it for spring rather than jamming it in.
Okay, this is a public hearing. If anyone wishes to address...
All right, I'll come up. I'll read from the state website, so at least you guys have an idea, I guess, of what a registrable boat is in Massachusetts.
Vessel.
This is from the, from the state. State law requires the registration of any boat that is powered by a motor and operated on public waterways in Massachusetts. Registration is required even if the motor is not the primary means of propulsion for that boat. Some examples of boats that require registration include fishing boats with motors, recreational motorboats, canoes, or sailboats that use motors, includes electric motors, and personal watercrafts such as jet skis or wet bikes. Boats exempt from registration requirements include those that do not use motors and documented vessels, large boats that are issued a marine document and registration through the U.S. Coast Guard. So basically, if you can have a canoe, and you're fine until you put that half horsepower electric trolling motor on the back, then you're supposed to have numbers on the front of the boat. I don't know if that clarifies anything for your purposes, but that apparently is...
No, that's what I thought it was.
Yeah.
And Ken came up with something different.
So he's kind of right, but the rest of you are kind of right too.
He came up with something different, that's what...
It was a little scarier what I came up with.
Can I add something to that?
Don Jepson, I just wanted to say that one of the things that crossed my mind as we, as you were talking about this, is that when you have a boat on a trailer, does it count as one or two, or, and that's something maybe you need to look at too, to distinguish whether it's one unit or two.
Well, I would have to say, reading this, that if either were unregistered, it would be illegal in the front yard if it was...
So the motion you wanted to, I see here a consensus that the motion is to pass over this article.
Which we've already voted on. I mean, basically, what we're discussing is whether or not to adhere to a vote we've already taken.
Yes.
Which is to table it until the spring.
Correct.
So...
Doesn't sound like anything's changed.
All right.
We're looking for volunteers for the subcommittee.
I think we got them.
I think Mike volunteered.
Yeah, I'll sit on it.
Next was the continued discussion on able 625 accessory buildings and to add...
One of the things about 628 and 625, and you had, you had okayed 625 accessory buildings with the building height to be determined in accordance with state building code 780 CMR Ninth Edition. I want to confirm that that's the wording that you wanted to have put in there.
Correct.
Yes.
On 628, there was questions about the FAR as a restriction on the lawfully existing lots in residential zones and village districts. And the discrepancy between the 25 percent for lots that are zero to 5,000 square feet, going up to 16 percent for lots 5,000 to 10,000 square feet. And in discussion with the building commissioner, the director of inspectional services, excuse me, Dave, was to raise it to 20 percent and 17 percent for the lots that are 5,000 to 10,000 and 10,000 to 15,000 square feet. In the handout, there's a, there's an analysis of what that means in terms of sizes of square footage of building within those FAR descriptions.
Ken? If my math is correct, that's still, it's still, I don't have, what handout is, I'm sorry?
It's in your folder.
Okay, I got it. I think we need to make an amendment because at 5,001 square feet, the building is still less, smaller than it would be at 5,000 square feet. It's difficult to do the math to get to the exact point. I suggest that we leave those numbers, but have an asterisk, it's just a suggestion, that it be 20 percent or 17 percent, but with, but not less than the maximum allowed for the smaller size lot. Because if you do 20 percent of 5,000, you get 1,250 square feet. 20 percent of, I'm sorry, if you do 25 percent FAR for a 5,000 square foot building, you get 1,250 square feet, and at 20 percent, you get 1,002 square feet. So you're still punishing, but I've been known to make mistakes with my math, so check me. So if we leave the numbers as they are, but add for each of them an asterisk that that is the percentage, but shall not be less than the maximum allowed for the previous smaller lot.
For the prior category.
And at the 17 percent for the, for the 10,001 square foot lot, for the 10,000, you get 20, you get a 2,000 square foot area, but for 10,001 square feet, at 17 percent, you get a 1,700, 300 square feet less for the larger lot.
The larger lot.
But they can be corrected with that, with a statement like that, not less than the previous or higher...
The other option is to have an algorithm that allows a smooth transition over size. It's a relationship to the size and not to a category of sizes.
Sure. But as they are now, they're still, they still penalize the next small increment of area.
That's right.
Am I right? I don't know, but my math.
Your math is correct.
Spot on.
I didn't do well in school in math. Again, if we go back to our notes from the last meeting, I think we said we're going to hold off on 628. So again, you're saying the director of inspectional services is asking us to change our...
Reconsider, yes. Based on this FAR, these changes. However, I think, based on the conversation, still, this idea of a category of sizes instead of a smooth algorithm of dimensions puts a penalty on those that are the one square foot over the category.
Yeah, they agree.
Does our percentage of lot coverage do the same thing?
Percentage of lot coverage does almost the same thing as FAR, only you could have a two-story building.
I get you.
It'd be half the footprint, but the same amount of square footage.
Would the building height covenants control that? Wouldn't, that really shouldn't be a problem if someone likes to make a two-story building.
No, that's, that's the point of FAR. It doesn't, doesn't distinguish between two stories and one story.
It penalizes you though on the size of the building. It forces you to go to a rant style to get a reasonable amount of square footage, whereas if you go to two floors, you have half the amount of each floor.
Right, you're chopping up the living, yeah.
Yeah, you end up with the tiny, tiny rooms on each floor in order to maximize the square footage. It just doesn't work.
Yeah, tiny lots, yeah, we're talking about as well, too.
George, could I go back to 625 just for a question on incorporating the building code in there? If you go back to that and simply say the Ninth Edition, and come out with the Tenth, are you then stuck with the Ninth Edition according to this, or should, is there, isn't that little addition et sec with something like that mean and so forth, or as they come forward, that you would go with the current edition of the code? I'm just wondering if there needs to be some technical language that allows it to move with every time they change the building code, which seems like they're doing it every other thing.
This would, this would make this particular thing non-compliant if they go with Edition 10, 11, 12, whatever it is, and you'd have to change it.
Somebody would have to keep a copy of nine and say, this is how we determine building.
But if they change it, now you've got something that's not compliant with the state code anymore.
That's a good point. Why not say, we're at the current state building code in effect? Yeah, good point, thank you. Yeah. Per the current building code in effect, built the state code. Yeah. Good point.
So the, we'll have to have a handout, planning board handout with this change included in it. For 625.
628 stills staying off the board.
Right.
So it was in the warrant, so like the other articles, we'll just have to say it's removed.
You'll have to, you'll have to amend the...
Well, the motion should read that you're going to adopt 625, or change 625 and not 628. I think you could handle it that way, the motion.
Right.
But we'd have to amend 625 for that building code acknowledgement.
That's right.
Could we say latest current, latest comma current edition of the state building code 780 CMR?
I think the latest edition of the state building code 780 CMR would cover it.
Okay. Okay, we're good with that. And then we have the continued hearing on Article 13, to amend the zoning bylaw, Article 4, add section 460 Tremont Nail Factory redevelopment overlay. Anybody need a copy of the, of the October 11th version?
October 11.
as, as originally laid out, it's specific to the goals, the intent and purpose, the designation of the area, and five parcels are identified as, as included within this As an overlay, it would, the underlying zoning remains in force until there's application of this, of this overlay district. The allowed uses are what's, what's driving this, this change, and they are listed as the uses allowed within the WV1 zoning district and following additional allowed uses, conference center, hotel, light manufacturing, accessory food and beverage, marine connected use, artist studios, brewery and/or distillery. And then one use, one allowed use for a marijuana production facility in accordance with state law, but not including retail sales, dispensary, or cultivation. And that there's a limitation on when this, this can be used, it has to happen within five years, that there are still uses that are prohibited within the district, multiple uses being allowed in the, on one parcel or the existing buildings, a restriction on the density of residential units, and the design and performance standards, which are that there are no dimensional standards so long as the historic building elements are maintained in conformance with the Secretary of Interior standards for rehabilitation. No off-street parking or loading requirements. And that specifically, under the separation dimensional standards between different uses, as allowed by state law, state regulations, 935 CMR 50110 buffer zone. Since we have a marijuana establishment that we're allowing in within this district, that the section, as under section 463.4, that a pre-existing public or private school providing education in kindergarten or any grades one through 12 is reduced to zero feet. Since there are no pre-existing public or private schools providing education in kindergarten or any of the grades one through 12, this is a fairly moot point. And other performance standards as, as may be developed within the zoning bylaw, under the developers' agreements that, that are presumed to occur between the use, those users of the facility and the Wareham Redevelopment Authority or the Board of Selectmen. And then standard wording about severability.
So what's the main discussion here is, we want to change this so we can put a marijuana place there? Because I was okay with all this last meeting when, for the proposed use, but then the marijuana piece got injected in here.
Would you...
I'll speak to that. It's not just about the marijuana, and the marijuana use was before this board, originally in August. It was part of that.
Just for the record, would you state your name?
Yeah, Peter Titlebaum, chairman of the Wareham Redevelopment Authority and one of those idiot selectmen. We've got our chief idiot behind me. Yeah, this is, this has been, the marijuana use was in there from the beginning. To answer your question, that's significant in terms of the dollar value that the firm that would like to move in there would provide, both to the rehabilitation of Tremont Nail and also in the form of a licensing fee to be... and also in the form of a licensing fee to be negotiated finally by the Board of Selectmen to operate out there on a yearly basis. But that's not the only reason for this. We've had interest from other parties who would like to do things out there. We have a potter who would like to set up a co-op for potters to come, you know, essentially get subscriptions to make pottery out there. And then when you talk about the educational component of it, educational uses aren't allowed in WV1. So she can't even hold a class. Across the street, in the old company store property owned by the Assads, they've got a furniture refinisher and they're selling her wares, which is fine because, you know, commercial retail activity is allowed in WV1, she can do that. But she would like also to teach the public things and can't do that. She can't advertise a class in there now because educational uses once again aren't allowed out there. So if you do go through the uses in the thing, it's not just the marijuana use that we'd like to have there. We would like to overlay it with the other uses as well. All of those are consistent with the vision plan that was produced with funds for mass development last year. That came out in August of 2017, was presented actually at the first meet, at the Tremont event, you know, I know Mr. King was there. And so really what it is, it's enabling some of those things that are contained in the vision plan to go forward that otherwise could not.
Has there been any more information as to the impact of this marijuana production facility?
Well, I'll let Ken speak to that. I, you know, one of the things we did want to know, because residents had raised concerns about traffic, they'd raised concerns about potential odor and things of that nature. As regards traffic, there's going to be no 18-wheelers going in there. They're going to be, you know, box trucks bringing, bringing the marijuana in, in bags. So that's not going to be particularly odorous. As far as employees, they're talking 50 to 70 when they, when they build out and have three lines running simultaneously. That's not going to happen the first year. To the extent that parking becomes an issue on a Saturday night, for example, if we turn that freight building into a banquet facility, which is the desire, any lease with them would require them to essentially keep out of the parking lot when any events were going on. That's something we would put in there. That's something that they're aware of, that we would, we would require. So that's that. I'll let Ken speak to the, the odor issues because I know his office did some research on those.
Yeah, and what we did was we checked in with Colorado and Oregon where they have other facilities, and marijuana is, is illegal, and found that although the concern is, is high, as high out there about, about odors and noise, the actual impact is, is very low. We also visited a location in Bridgewater. The Chris Smith, the fire safety lieutenant from the Wareham Fire Department and myself toured the Bridgewater facility of ACS to determine what kind of impacts they had, and it's all contained within the, within the building. And this being a production facility, there's no growing, which typically has the highest level of, of odor in the process, in the line of, of development. And there is, there are airlocks, and it's, it's food, food grade level controls on everything within the, within the building. Because this is, is material for consumption.
I, I want to clarify, that's food grade level, not garlic grade level. Making note of our crouton factory that never was required to have any of the odor controls in place when it went in in the seventies. And, you know, like anything else, it's a lot harder to close the barn door, you know, after the horse escapes. With this, in addition to the performance standards that would be required under this bylaw, if it's approved, the selectman, I'm sure, would also put in requirements that basically say, should ye stink outside of ye premises, ye shall be shut down. You know, we're not interested in inflicting a public nuisance upon the town. Further with regard to public safety issues, we did have the Wareham Fire Chief out there, Chief Rowley, and they were out there at the same time, a couple of their people. They explained to him the type of operations they have, that it's essentially the same as many of the food production operations and so on and so forth. And the, the chief didn't see any significant difference between food processing and what they intended to do. So he didn't have any particular concerns as to the nature of the chemicals that they might use in one form of extraction, or the, the pressurization that might be used in the other form of extraction. So he didn't have any issues with either of those.
There are, there is guidance in the, in the National Fire Prevention Association guidelines for 2018 specific to marijuana facilities. And it was, I confirmed with the, with the Fire Department that they are, will be using those as guidance in the analysis of the, of the proposed facilities that may come.
And they will certainly be part of any inspections process, once equipment's brought in, once the lines are brought up to operating condition. Certainly in the host agreement that the selectman would negotiate, we would want sign-offs from our building commissioner. It's a change of use, so you're going to have to have that. He in turn will want sign-offs, you know, from the Wareham Fire District as well.
This will require a special permit as, as well, add another layer of permitting on top of it, in accordance with the other marijuana bylaw that's in place in the zoning.
I kind of wish I were their attorney. I'd be making a lot of money because they have to jump through many hoops.
So this consumes one of the three licenses?
No.
No.
The three licenses are only for retail.
And the Board of Selectmen has already issued host agreements with those. They're still in the process, of course, of getting their final state approvals. But the three retail licenses, one went to the company that is now owned by MedMen. This is their fourth permutation since they came in originally as compassionate care. But this is the one down across from Bessie Park, where the medical marijuana is, they also have a retail license. There's a retail license for the one out in the industrial park in the former Avionics business, and there's a retail license also down on Cranbury Highway east Wareham down the, what's 3100s, somewhere in there.
Jordan Plaza.
Yeah. So those are the three retail licenses. Those have been exhausted. The bylaw passed in the spring limited the amount of retail licenses that could go out, but it did not limit grow facilities, it did not limit production facilities.
Our town bylaws did not limit?
No, they did not.
No, there wasn't an allowance under state law for that purpose. There is an allowance under state law. If, if you voted, if the town voted for marijuana legalization, they couldn't prohibit. But they were allowed to reduce the amount of, the number of retail facilities to the number of alcohol licenses that the town has.
Yeah, but package stores. So we were, basically, we had to, we were forced to allow at least 20% of the existing number of alcohol retail sales, you know, package stores. So there's 13 packies in Wareham, so, you know, you round up and you get three, and that's what we put in the bylaw to mirror what the state allowed.
They recall that, but, but this processing, there's no limitation?
No.
We could have five of these outfits in town if we wanted to.
You could.
You'd have to have a whole.
At the time, people, people brought up the notion that, well, this is, you know, essentially in some ways, you know, an agricultural production, and this town historically has agriculture, so some people didn't even question it on that basis.
At the time we did it, we were given the indication that it covered all marijuana uses as it did when the medical was enacted, and we put that in a specific zone. But apparently that either changed or we get bad information. Yes?
Check out the actual town meeting warrant article, and maybe I'm confused. But under section A definitions, before Medical Marijuana Treatment Center, a marijuana establishment is defined as a marijuana cultivator, marijuana testing facility, marijuana product manufacturer, marijuana retailer, or other type of licensed marijuana-related businesses as defined according to state regulations, 935 CMR 500, including any subsequent updates. And then you go down to section 392. And this is where I'm confused because it says, other marijuana establishments, it doesn't say retail. To the extent that such facilities are permitted under state laws and regulations, shall be allowed by special permit in the institutional and industrial zoning districts and in strip commercial district east of Glen Shally Road, Depot Street and Great Neck Road. So it doesn't differentiate to only retail sales. It says other marijuana establishments. So if I'm looking at this from a town meeting perspective, that what we passed was that any marijuana establishment is limited to three locations.
If you look at section 393, you'll see that it says, the number of marijuana retailers shall be limited to a total of three separate establishments within the town of Wareham. We are not allowed to restrict the number of other establishments.
But we're not restricting the other, we're just saying where they can go.
Correct.
So it says that they shall only be allowed by special permit in the institutional, industrial and strip commercial. It does not specifically say that only retail can go in those places. It does say the number of marijuana retailers shall be limited to a total of three establishments.
Correct.
But we didn't define where those three. It just says other marijuana establishments, so that would encompass all of them, I would think.
It encompasses all of them as far as the districts that that particular article allowed. So you couldn't have a marijuana district, growing facility or a manufacturing facility in R30, for example, that's not allowed there. But in the areas where it is allowed, the number is unlimited because the, the bylaw goes, it, it starts here and says, this is where you can conduct marijuana operations, and it identifies the districts. Then it narrows down what the retail, how many retail licenses in those districts can be. But that does not exclude the placement of other facilities within those districts, or in this case, if there's an amendment.
This would add that use to this district.
It would add that use to this district. So it's kind of like, it's kind of like SET theory when they start teaching that in seventh grade. You know, here's where you can do it, here's how many you can do it, and they've got to be in here, but the how many you can do it is only, it only limits retail. It doesn't limit any, any of the other uses.
The, it was mentioned at some point that these agreements are only good for five years. Does that mean that they sunset, or does that mean they're renegotiating every five-year end of us?
They have to be renegotiated.
At whose pleasure?
At the town's pleasure and, and as the host community.
That would be the Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen under state law negotiate the host agreements.
So if I understand correctly from our discussion the other day at the, on-site, the attraction to this building by this company is the fact that it's, it already exists and that they can get started right away. That not, that they love Wareham and they would consider the industrial park, but they just love this building because it's sitting there ready to rock and roll.
Yeah, I mean, as a business, as a business decision, like anybody else, they're trying to jump into the market as quickly as they can, and this building is there, they don't have to build it, they don't have to go through, you know, they have to go through this process in order to do it, but they don't have to go through building, they don't have to go through this, they don't have to go through that, which would take them a lot longer.
I think the point I was trying to, to make was when we were discussing that, the, the subject of a sunset on this special permit was discussed, and that five years, if they know that they've only got a five-year window to exist in that location, that gives them five years to prepare another site, another building, and move into a more appropriate To me, looking at this, the attraction is just money. It, it really doesn't, it doesn't look like it enhances, it doesn't enhance the value of the location as a destination. It's, these guys will give us a million dollars over five years, we can use that million bucks to affect some sort of repairs on the Tremont, even though it's a very small portion of what is needed to rehabilitate that site. But I don't see, in here, I don't see any of that language that states, okay, you know, you've got five years and then you, you need to move on to a more appropriate location and give us back the Tremont location so that we can continue to build it as a destination.
That's section 463.5. Use is not lawful, begun within five years adoption of this bylaw under section 463.4 shall be prohibited. And we can, we can.
But it says begin in five years. It doesn't say end in five years, which is what I mean by a sunset. You can, you open up January 1, 2019, and you got to be gone January 1, 2024.
Well, we can change this wording to, to say that uses under section 463.4 shall be prohibited five years from the adoption of this bylaw.
Given, given the amount of money they intend to put into this site, have they requested a long-term lease?
They've requested five, and what they would hope for is a mutual option to renew for additional five.
What other ventures have you have besides the marijuana? I mean, the education piece was there, I think last time we had a meeting, there was, there was a presentation to use it as a, a, a community-centric downtown area.
Yeah, what you'd have to do is go back and look at the uses that were in the vision plan. What's interesting is the vision plan contemplated this building hanging around for a while and eventually being torn down for housing. But as with any multi-use sort of development, you don't build the housing first and then bring in the banquet facilities where the, you know, wedding revelers are drunkenly streaming out across the parking lot at midnight, waking up the residents. You make sure that the drunken revelers are already there, and then you bring in the housing so that you can say, and we got a banquet facility over here, just telling you. People who come to the nuisance have a lot less legitimacy to their gripes than people who have the nuisance inflicted upon them. So that was how the vision plan was always contemplated. Looking at, you know, what's in the vision plan, that long freight building by the water, I don't know how familiar you are with the site, but the one that's right on the water, the furthest building in, we did get $200,000 out of community preservation via town meeting in the spring to go ahead and start structurally stabilizing the building and making some improvements to it. We allocated $50,000 in community development block grants, the selectmen did this before the redevelopment authority kind of came in and is more involved in that, for design purposes. And currently, the redevelopment authority is going to be seeking proposals for that $50,000 to be spent to help do architectural services for the freight building, the packaging and pickling buildings, which are those two sort of seemingly connected buildings that are sort of in the middle of the parking lot, and also the White Building, which is the office building when you, when you're up on Elm Street, to get those going. So there are, you know, things going apace along with this. This isn't the only thing that's going on out of Tremont Nail at the present time. And again, everything that's being contemplated is using the, the vision plan as the basis. So I would suggest to anybody on the planning board, if, you know, if you've got some time, go ahead, flip back, I know some of you have looked at it, I don't know if you all have. I would certainly urge you to go look through the vision plan and see what it is, because I think seen in that context, you'll understand why this was crafted the way it was.
I appreciate very, very much the hard work you've put into this, and it's very difficult to express a different viewpoint, but I have to. The first sentence in the Tremont Nail Factory redevelopment overlay district presentation says, promote public health, safety and welfare by encouraging redevelopment in accordance with the town's master plan and the Tremont Nail Factory Vision Plan. There is no master plan yet, and, and the Tremont Nail Factory Vision Plan sees the use of this building as a very short, short-term operation. In fact, it states that it's a building formed that is out of scale and character with the local context. That's the steel building. So, and, and Mike mentioned that we were look, we were hoping to see a sunset clause in. in here because it's a matter of time. First of all, it's a decision that is being made without consideration of the master plan. And, and I know that it's been sitting, versions of it have been sitting on shelves, new ver, new versions have been prepared in draft form, and we are talking about seriously sitting down and working on this new, to make this draft a, a real master plan. And what's, what worries me is that allowing this use, uh, the building to be used this way at this point without an end to it, in other words, what businessman, if they are successful in that location, wouldn't want to renew? So he already has the right, and at the presentation two Thursdays ago, he said, "We look forward to renewals."
No, I, I understand, and, and you're, you're essentially reiterating, uh, what Mr. King said as well, and, and what you both said when we met, so I, so I understand that, so.
But it's worth reiterating because it, it's a function of large-scale planning that, that's not being looked at here, and I, with all due respect, I know the work that's gone into this.
Oh, we, we know it's not done yet, you know, the motions get revised right up, right up until before town meeting, and I will certainly carry your concerns back to the redevelopment authority tomorrow night, and I will actually ask them to consider putting a sunset provision in to, to address your concerns, 'cause that, it's a fair point.
And the, um, I'm sorry, I was listening to you and I lost my train of thought.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay, here it is. And, and I haven't understood that there is any requirement that whatever, this building is totally inconsistent with the language we go over and over again. The use is compatible with the Tremont Nail Factory Vision Plan. Well, the vision plan, it's, it's the, it's the very first and quickly rejected use for that building, which later, the, the, the more advanced plans, the A, B, C, and D, uh, get rid of it. So in the meantime, unless another developer who might want to come into the, into the area has some assurance that this thing isn't going to be there for more, you know, undetermined amount of time, what is the attraction for them to come there? And clearly, the steel building does not belong there, it should either be demolished, if any, currently, or renovated so that it is consistent with the historic character of the area. And, and, and we aren't, we haven't addressed these matters. If I knew that in five years, they're gone, well, five years is not that long a time, it gives us a chance to clean up the site, find other users, I could see it. But when we're talking 10 years, then it's gonna be 15, then forget doing a master plan, you know, forget this thing. And as far as residential, I, I thought that the last, the last plan was beautiful, but I didn't pay attention to the railroad track right behind it, and that needs to be studied. How attractive would residential be there with the train running by? Maybe it can be dealt with sound protection and so on.
And that, and that's typically what happens, if you look, for example, Quincy has, you know, the red line going through it, it has commuter rail going through it, and they are just throwing up apartment development after apartment development without apparently any concern about the railroad tracks being there. Apparently, the millennials don't mind this stuff, I don't know, but.
But I just think that, that the absence of the master plan guiding this, this move is, is unfortunate.
I, I think you have to realize what the master plan creates, and it doesn't get necessarily down to the details about specifically what happens on each parcel of land. It's a, it's a broader view of the town development in a whole. What does come down to more specific use is the vision plan. And the vision plan recognizes that there is a series of uses that could be made of the historic buildings on the site, and that the steel building has an opportunity to provide some benefit in the short term while the, the forward development of the historic buildings is, is made, and we find the uses. And by the way, we, we are still getting calls, I'm still getting calls in the office about other developers and other users who are interested in the, in the, uh, the historic buildings on the site.
Well, I, I think, Ken, I think you hit it right, the nail on the head, short-term. That I, I would have no problem with this, I think it's a great way to, to generate funds to help the progress of the, the reclamation of the site, if it were short-term. But an open-ended, you know, five with an option for another five with an option for another five, I, I just see it as the wrong use in the wrong place. I, you know, a, a manufacturing or a processing facility in town, you, you can't stop progress, marijuana's here to stay, you're not gonna get rid of it. But it's, it's manufacturing, belongs in the industrial park somewhere, it belongs, it doesn't belong in a place where you're gonna have a banquet hall, a pottery studio, maybe a brewery slash restaurant. How do the two mix?
The brewery and the pottery studio, people have both said that they don't have a problem with.
Well, they don't, but the people that go to visit them, it, it might.
Even though you won't see anything on the outside of the.
The other concern that I had was I was reading some excerpts from the meeting a week ago, Thursday, I think it was.
Right, we had a public, uh, workshop.
Right.
Uh, redevelopment authority had a public workshop meeting.
And when we chatted onsite Tuesday morning, um, the figure of 1.5 million over five years was mentioned, but yet in the article, it was a million. So that was the substantial difference as far as monies were concerned, and then we.
Which, which article?
It was in the Small Wareham Weekly.
What, what I set out, I don't believe you were at the workshop meeting. The numbers are currently in negotiation right now. You know, we hope to have what the proposal would be, certainly by town meeting time. At the time, uh, I think I, I could fairly state that we knew that we could get at least $100,000 in lease funding, which through the, um, Tremont Nail Factory, uh, what is it? Well, we passed at town meeting, there's a revolving fund where all leases, rents, whatever, any income generated for the property has to go into that for the maintenance and restoration of Tremont Nail. So we knew that they were gonna pay us at least $100,000 for the lease, we knew that they would pay us at least $100,000 in a licensing fee. Ken's currently in the process, uh, and I guess I can say this 'cause there's no media here, but he's currently in the process of trying to shake them down for significantly more than that.
Well, the other, the other thing that I saw in that article too that brought concern was when we discussed it, it was all monies that were generated by this facility would go toward the Tremont project, but on the article, it said the majority of the funds, didn't say 100%.
Yeah, I, I can't be responsible for the media.
I, I just wanna make sure I understand it 100%.
All lease, all lease funds have to go in.
Yeah.
I don't think we've ever said that the licensing fees would go back towards Tremont Nail. I don't know that we can, we can actually negotiate that without going to the legislature for a special act, to be honest with you, because typically licensing fees go into our town general fund, just like we do for package stores, used car dealers, whatever it is.
But that would reduce, now you're talking $100,000 a year for five years, that's significantly shy, the numbers that we're talking about. That's only half a million versus a million or a million-five, so the number keeps watching down.
I, I would wait until Ken provides a final number before subscribing to any numbers that have been reported.
I mean, I, i- if there's a bright spot in any of this for me, it's just the employment opportunity. And that would be assuming that we can negotiate some sort of an agreement that says that town residents have a, have a priority as far as the hiring practice for any positions that open.
Yeah, that would absolutely go in there, we've discussed that with them. Uh, one of the interesting things is under the marijuana legalization, and he knows where I'm going with this.
I was gonna say, do they have to pass a drug test?
Well, the, the funny thing is, is they, actually, it's the opposite. Anybody who was arrested for a marijuana crime goes to the top of the list when it comes to employment decisions under the, the legalization of marijuana. They call, what do they call it, a social justice provision? So when they go before the state, when they go before the state to get a license, if you're a prior convicted pot dealer, you're gonna jump over to somebody else, you know, and get approved first because they, you know, apparently they feel badly about jailing so many people for so many, you know, for decades or whatever.
Or breaking the law.
I wonder if a traveling retailer knows that.
Huh? Currently in retail?
A traveling retailer that was at town meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, the itinerant salesman we had.
Charlie.
I have a, a bunch of questions here, but I'm, I'm gonna sit over there and do it as a private citizen, I don't wanna do it as a consultant to the board, if you, it's okay with you.
I, I have a couple things outside of the marijuana discussion, and one is your no off-street packing and loading requirement. Does that mean you don't wanna?
That would be negotiated in.
Yet to the packing requirements in the zoning bylaw?
That's correct, that would be negotiated in the developer's agreement. Since, since we have, since we own the property, we have much, much more control than over a, a developer that's come onto a private piece of land. And we can, we can be very specific about not only the amount of parking that's used, but also as to whether or not they have to clear out that parking at certain times so we can have events in the space. It's our space, and we, we can define what can be allowed and what has to be accommodated within this space.
Well, I would just like to see, area adjoining businesses not be penalized would be a next door to this site that is so successful that the packing is spilling off into other.
Or onto the street.
I would, Charlie, yeah.
I read through this entire bylaw, and I think that the marijuana aspect of it is certainly, uh, can be emotional one, it can be a concern for a variety of reasons. But I think you've got to look at the bylaw as a whole in terms of what it says with respect to what it means for other things other than just marijuana. I have personal concerns about that, but I'm gonna set that aside and just talk about the content of the bylaw as it's suggested, and just throw some questions out, because I don't have the answers to some of these, and I think it's important in terms of determining whether or not this is a good bylaw to pass. So the first question I have is to the board, um, and I will refer to what Emmanuel had spoken about earlier with respect to the town's master plan. It's referring to that plan, but as he has suggested, it doesn't exist yet. So it can't be a legal document that you can refer to and say that it's encouraging developments, development in accordance with that plan. All it is is a draft at this point. So to put something in a bylaw that becomes a part of the zoning bylaw, that's a part of a document that doesn't exist, doesn't seem to be, it seems to me that it's backwards, that the, the draft ought to be adopted ultimately by town meeting so that it has teeth and something that you can point to, then you can come to something like this and say, "Okay, now here it is, and it complies with the terms and agreements or the suggestions of the bylaw."
To, to my understanding, Charlie, town meeting doesn't vote on a master plan.
I thought they did.
I think they vote to accept.
Absolutely.
It is a report type.
Right, it comes through as a report, but I don't know that it shows up as a warrant article with a bunch of.
If you don't adopt a plan, what teeth does it have? It's the same as the one that's sitting on the shelf now that everybody refers to, but nothing ever gets done about it because it's not an official document.
Yeah, I think that one was adopted by the Board of Selectmen, because my mother was part of the master plan committee in the late 90s, and she was hurt to put so much effort into it just to have it gather dust, and the selectmen essentially give the master plan committee a pat on the head and then never look at the thing again.
I know we had to go in and alter it at town meeting, so I would assume it was approved by town.
Yeah, I'll have to check on that.
I do have the same question about the vision plan. I have to acknowledge ignorance in terms of what the vision plan really says, but it would seem to me that for the board to make any kind of a decision on this bylaw, that you've got to be able to say, having read both documents, that it is in agreement with the terms of the vision plan. I, I don't know that I've heard that yet from the majority of the board members, I'll just leave that out there. The second thing that I wanted to know was, um, this bylaw says and encourages the adaptive reuse of vacant and underutilized historic mill buildings. That metal building is not a historic building by any stretch of the imagination, it was only built in the mid-'70s. So I'm not sure that that even qualifies under this particular bylaw. Again, I'm just raising questions, I don't have answers for a lot of this stuff. 462, it says that this will be a redevelopment overlay district. I don't see anything in this documentation that says that this district is gonna be added to section 212 of the bylaws, which lists the various districts that we have as overlays. It's a technical thing, but it still should be listed in there as to what these overlay districts are. The second thing, under 462, which is 462.1, it defines the district as assessor's map 132 with certain parcels. I have always had, uh, an issue with defining any kind of zoning districts with respect to parcels of land. Property lines change. They can change at any time. Does that mean that the boundary of the district changes with the change of the parcels? I think that probably all of the parcels here are bounded by Cranberry Highway, probably the Wonkin Co River, the railroad, and probably Elm Street, so it may be a moot point. But it's still my opinion that you should never adopt a district boundary that is identified strictly by map and lot number unless you specify the date at which you're saying, "This is the map of 2018." Lot lines change. Assessor's maps change, and when those lines change, you haven't got the same boundary five years from now that you've got today, just another issue. 462.4 says, "When a building permit is issued for any project approved in accordance with this section, the provisions of the underlying district shall no longer be applicable to the land shown on the site plan which is submitted pursuant to this bylaw." So if I were to submit a site plan for that 7.2 acres and put a 12-by-15 building on it, and you approve it, the underlying land, that 7.2 acres, is no longer bound by the provisions of the underlying WV1 zoning district for anything. I don't think that's appropriate language that you wanna say.
Not when you're referencing uses.
Yeah.
In this one.
The next thing I have a concern about is 463, where it says that the uses shall be allowed by special permit by the Board of Selectmen or the designation in accordance with section 460. 460 identifies the Board of Appeals as the permit-granting authority for all projects, non-conforming uses, and for special permits, it designates your board as the authority for those projects. I can understand the Board of Selectmen being involved in the issuance of a license, if it happens to be the kind of an establishment that requires a license, but I don't think it's appropriate to have anyone other than the Board of Appeals or the Planning Board doing any kind of an evaluation for site plan review, other than your two boards. You deal with it all the time, and it ought to be consistent and stay that way. It says that, in 463.2, "Other than prohibited uses, there are limited restrictions on allowed uses, so long as noise, air quality, odors, vibrations are all within acceptable limits." I question the use of the term acceptable limits. Usually those are defined in terms of decibels, um, in terms of, um, noise, certain air quality limits in terms of the, um, kind of things that are discharged into the air and so forth. Who's to determine what that acceptable limit is? I just think the term is too general. Again, and then it continues, "The use is compatible with the Tremont Nail Factory Vision Plan and supports the historic content of the existing buildings and cultural context of the Tremont Nail Factory Vision Plan." So any of the uses in this area, if, if it doesn't follow that, seems to me it's non-compliant. When you go down to, uh, let's see, 463.3, "In addition to those uses allowed by the underlying WV1 zoning district are the following." My question is, is the WV1 table of uses being modified with appropriate footnotes to include the above uses? The next question, you've dealt with a little bit with, with respect to, um... The next question you dealt with a little bit with, with respect to, um... I'm sorry, that's not correct. I'm, I'm getting ahead of myself. 463.5, "The use is not lawfully begun. Within five years of the adoption of this bylaw under Section 463.4 shall be prohibited." In other words, if a hotel use, which in the proposed bylaw is an allowed use at the time that the bylaw becomes effective, which is town meeting, but if nobody applies and gets a permit within five years, the use of the site for a hotel disappears, the way this is written. Or any other use. If you don't have a light manufacturing facility or a conference center or apartments in mixed use. If none of those are applied for within five years of the date of approval of town meeting, the uses in that district disappear. You just wipe them off the...
Just to clarify, Charlie, that only applies to 463.4, not all of the uses.
Okay.
And 463.4 is the marijuana product manufacturing?
Yeah, it does reference under Section 463.4, so it is limited to applicability to the section immediately preceding it.
Okay, I stand corrected on that if that's the case. 463.6, I do have some questions about that. In each of the uses that are listed there, I'm wondering why we're mentioning them again? They're specifically, um...
Prohibited.
In addition to other uses prohibited in the underlying WV1 district, which are not allowed by this TNFR overlay district, are specifically the following prohibited uses: Al Dout Use. It's already not allowed in WV1. Why do you mention it again? The underlying use is still WV1. A dry cleaning establishment, it is an allowed use. If you don't allow it in the WV1 district in the overlay, it's allowed in some parts of the district, but it isn't allowed in others. Motor vehicle sales and services, they're currently allowed. Is this changed by the entire WV1 district by this? Filling station, it's already not allowed. Do we need to mention it? Earth removal, it's not allowed. Hazardous waste, not allowed. Solid waste facility, not allowed. The next one, 463.8. I don't know that there's been any discussion with the Planning Board or anyone about the density issues here. Maybe there has, but I may have missed it. The next thing that talks about in 464, it talks about the project and its design and impacts approved by the Wareham Redevelopment Authority or in its absence the Board of Selectmen. This allowance includes no additional dimensional standards, no off-street parking and loading requirements, no landscaping requirements, reduction of separation and dimensional standards between different uses as allowed by state law and approved by the Wareham Redevelopment Authority or by the Board of Selectmen. If that applies to the entire zone, I think there's some real issues with that particular section. The next one, 464.2, and this is one that Ken mentioned before about reducing the setbacks from a marijuana, marijuana establishment from a pre-existing public or private school education, reducing it to zero. I disagree with that and I disagree with the interpretation. Here's what the CMR says. "Our marijuana establishment shall comply with all local requirements regarding citing, provided however that if no local requirements exist, then marijuana establishment shall not be cited within a radius of 500 feet of a public or private school, daycare center, or any facility in which children commonly congregate." I don't see where that gives the local authority the right to reduce that down just because there isn't a facility currently in that location. It would be the same thing as saying that you don't have to, um... Comply with the requirement of a... Under the subdivision control law, it says that if there is no regulation for frontage, then the minimum is 20 feet. I don't know of any bylaw that's ever passed that has said that you could reduce the frontage to 10.
Where are you finding, uh, where in the CMR are you finding that?
5, CMR, 500.110, three buffer zone.
Okay, yeah, what I'm seeing here-
Right, direct from them.
Yeah, I've got it here. And it says, "Is not located within 500 feet of a pre-existing public or private school providing education in the kindergarten or any of the grades 1 through 12, unless a city or town adopts an ordinance or bylaw that reduces the distance requirement." So, I guess it's a question of which, yeah.
I went to this section and, and I went right to the section and this is what it said. So, there must be some inconsistency in some of the CMRs that are out there that you look at. Because this says, "It shall not be cited within a radius of 500 feet of a public or private school, daycare center, or any facility in which children commonly congregate." But even if it says that, that you can't do it if the site is pre-existing, why would you want to do it less than 500 feet? You can't put a liquor stove within 500 feet of a church. Why would you want to put an establishment such as that within 500 feet of anything that could be used, uh, for kids?
Well, I think it's also gonna limit the, the future use-
It limits the future use?
Of the rest of the property. If you wanted to put a school in there, it would be limiting in that way.
Of course it would. It'd be the same thing as saying that the state law says, "I can't fire a gun within 500 feet of a structure." But the town of Wareham says it's okay to do it if 200 feet. It doesn't make any sense to me. We should be protecting kids and not saying that we could do it just because one doesn't exist today. It doesn't make any sense to me.
Just, just for clarification, Charlie, the version I'm looking at is dated March 23rd, 2018.
Okay.
And I know it's been through several permutations.
It says that, but it still doesn't make any sense to me to put this kind of establishment in an area where potentially it could end up affecting the rights of people to do other things with their property. I realize it's a first-come, first-served world. But this is unique.
Well, I believe it's also, a daycare center can go in any district in any location. So, if it comes in after the fact, I mean, the, the 500 feet is... Unless they, the state has enacted...
No, they haven't. They talk about pre-existing. In other words, you're not, they don't want you bringing the marijuana facility to the educational facility that exists. But there's nothing stopping an educational facility from coming to a location that's within X amount of feet of a marijuana establishment. So, it wouldn't prevent other educational opportunities down there.
What is the appeal of this candidate for the property? Is it, is it the building itself or the fact that we are an authorized community for this type of processing?
Both.
Is there geographical location?
It's the geographical location, it's the regulations that allow the licensing of a facility, and it's the fact that the building is existing. And- Of the size, it's appropriate for their business model.
And is there no other buildings we can offer them in the boundaries of Wareham that are currently zoned for this use?
Not that we own.
So, which brings me to a question of illegal in the state of Massachusetts, still legal, illegal on a federal level. You know, this, to me, this is different than a, a private building owner leasing for the purpose of this. We, we're now part of the chain of custody of this process that is still illegal on a federal level. Is that where we wanna be as a town?
No. Even, uh, even Jeff Sessions hasn't taken a stick to this the way he's tried to, uh... Jeff Sessions, that guy. Even, even the Attorney General, who shall remain unnamed, hasn't taken a stick to this the way he's tried to do with sanctuary cities and things of that nature. As much as I think he's stuck in the 1940s on his overall views of marijuana, he hasn't done that. I would also say that, you know, to that point, the citizens of the Commonwealth voted to legalize marijuana and the citizens of Wareham actually voted for it at a higher rate than the citizens of Commonwealth did. We've already gone through the process of regulating and saying where retail marijuana shops can go. So, it's a, it's a little bit late in the game, I think, to be scratching our heads about marijuana too, too much here. It's the fact of life, it's here. You know, town meeting, I think unanimously passed the regulations that we put forward before them in March.
Well, what, what I'm saying though is, that's fine. It was voted by the people. I agree with that. But we as the town of, of these custodians of the property of Wareham are now part of a process that is not fully legal. And do we need to put ourselves in that position right now until this is all clarified? The second piece is, I have to go back to what Mike said, is that we're limiting the other occupants of that property by first adopting this in there. You know, I, I don't care if the, the pottery guy says it's okay, but I don't know that a hotel or a catering business is going to say it's okay. I'll, I'll tell you honestly, I'm in 3119 Cranberry Highway. That third license is gonna consume 5,000 square foot of a professional building and probably one of the best professional buildings in this town. And it's gonna affect my business. And I think it would affect future businesses that would move into that building as well. And I think where we have complete control over the, the nail factory property, there may be a time for this type of manufacturing to go in there, but it shouldn't be the first business that's in there, is, is my feeling. And I, and I think there's enough available real estate that is zoned properly to allow this business to move into the town legally. Where the, that we're removed and insulated from the process, not being the building owners. I, you know, if, if they're, if they're checking off all three boxes, the pre-existing building, the geographical location, the licensing in the town, I think if they're interested enough, if we have enough appeal to them, they'll develop a piece of property here that's zoned properly and will not need to move into Tremont Nail without us having to change a bylaw. All that being said, everything that Charlie brought to the table says that this is not ready to go in front of town meeting. There's, there's too many points here that need to be fine-tuned and it's not gonna happen in the next two weeks, just like the last three that we put in front of this board. So, um... I just, I, I know this is a public hearing. I don't know if anyone else has anything else to say, but right now, I just wanna ask the chairman, we're, what's being asked of us is to take this amendment to the bylaw and put it in front of town meeting in a couple of weeks? Is this what's being asked here?
Next Monday.
In one week?
Outside, I, I think you know full well what you're in for with the marijuana discussion. I think having the Board of Selectmen being the licensing board and negotiating host agreements and also granting the special permit is problematic. That looks like there could be a conflict there.
I've, I've taken note of the remarks here. And like I say, these will, these points will be discussed at the redevelopment authority meeting. If the, you know, we're the, we're the proponents of the article, so it's incumbent upon us to listen to comments and to try to, you know, accommodate concerns where it's possible to do so. So, that's what we'll spend our time tomorrow doing.
Yeah, and, you know, the no landscaping requirements, the relief. I, I think I know what you're trying to accomplish with the relief on the parking. But so is every other applicant that comes before us. So, you know, that's, and I think we need to be consistent there. I think probably the sunset requirement that we spoke of or another look at what's going on there in five years would probably make it more palatable. And that might soften the impact of this.
I'm here to listen, so...
Claire Smith, Town Moderator. I'm gonna take this from a moderator's perspective because when you have a zoning article that comes before town meeting, there are certain requirements that have to be fulfilled. And if they don't, it falls on my shoulders to decide whether or not what you're presenting falls within the scope of the article. So, I have a few issues that I think you need to think about. If you take a look at your original posting in the newspaper, the posting said, "To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw to include a new Tremont Nail Restoration Overlay District as Section 460 under Article 4 and to designate the district as lots A1, B1, 1,000A, 1,000B, 1,000B1, 1,001, and 1,008C on Assessors Map 132 and Lot 1210 on Assessors Map 61." The actual article that is on town meeting is to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw, Article 4, overlay districts, to add a Tremont Nail Factory redevelopment overlay district, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk or to take any other action relative thereto. So, when this goes to the Attorney General's office, is she gonna look at that differentiation between a restoration and a redevelopment? Restoration is to return something to its original condition. A redevelopment is to redevelop. So, what you advertise is not what's in the warrant article. That's number one. It says the information was available in the Planning Department. What was available in the Planning Department was what you got on August 30th. Your hearing was August 13th. This went to the town clerk on August 30th. So, the public really didn't have access to this until August 30th after your hearing, although it was handed out to the people here. So, did they have notice? Yes, if they attended your hearing, they did have notice because they got it here, but it was not on file with the town clerk until August 30th. So, was the public duly notified? On August 13th of your hearing, you had no specific bylaws. This is what you had. You had thoughts and ideas. And this is the issue I have with putting articles on the warrant that aren't fully prepared. Full notice should've gone into the newspaper about what the intent was of this whole thing, not just that you wanted to create an overlay district. I don't think the public has been duly notified. In what you prepared for October, well, October 4th was the next paper that was filed with the town clerk. Your October 11th differs considerably. And as a moderator, changes to zoning can be minimal after your hearing. They cannot be major. I went through and I outlined in red what the changes were. You see the maximum? Those are all major changes. Those are not minimal changes, even from the 4th. So, you've got major changes, not minimal. How is the Attorney General gonna look at that? Chances are she'll send it back to you. Is this something you wanna take a chance with? Because if this fails, you have two years that you can't do anything. So, I think you've gotta think about, do you wanna go forward? Peter was saying that you can make changes right up to town meeting. Sure you can. But then it's my job to decide whether that's in the scope. Are they minimal changes or are they major changes from tonight? What you presented tonight, and this is what you're presented tonight, between now and next week. So, you've gotta think about that. Because then it comes on my shoulders to make that decision. And I'll tell you right now, I haven't slept since July 'cause I'm trying to figure this out, whether this is minimal or major. And I think Charlie has brought up some very valid points. The specific should've been printed in the paper. And I went to the town clerk's office and I asked, you know, "Is just that notice that you put in sufficient?" And I was told, "No, it wasn't." That you're supposed to put the whole article in so that people have proper notice. And that's not what was in there. So, like I said, your warrant articles for the people to obtain never went to the town clerk in a proper timeframe. I agree with Charlie about going back. You have to go back and redo those use tables. You have to go back and redo those juice tables, I would think. I would think you'd need to have another warrant article to change those juice tables because it says that there is no marijuana allowed in the Village One District. So I think there are a lot of things that should have been included in the warrant, other things that should take place along with this. And I think, I think you're taking a big risk if you move forward with this. Because if it's not properly done and the Attorney General rejects that, you can't do anything for two years. And do you want to wait two years before you do something? Would it be far better to come back in the spring with something that's been properly vetted with people? That they know what they're voting on? No one is going to sit at town meeting and read this. They're not going to understand it. They have no clue what you're trying to do and all of the things that Charlie has brought up, they're not going to understand. Now, at the public hearing a couple of weeks ago, Ken showed a photo of, the question was asked, what was the distance from the building? And he showed a photo that they measured it with GPS. I asked, was that from boundary to boundary because that's what the law said? And I was advised that it was in the handout that they handed out that night. And now here you have tonight's version, which is totally different. And state law says that you need a bylaw. Is that a legitimate bylaw, putting it in here? No, the public hasn't been notified that you're changing those dimensions down to zero. How's the Attorney General going to look at that? Are they going to look at that the public wasn't notified, that you went from 500 feet to zero without public notice? You have to let the public know what you're doing when you're doing zoning changes. So I see a lot of issues and a lot of issues that I have to struggle with at town meeting floor. And I've reached out to other moderators, I've asked for their opinions, and the answer I get is, the changes can only be minimal. And your hearing began August 13th. So you can't come back a week from now and change this tomorrow night and expect that those are minimal changes because they're not. So I think the Attorney General is going to get all of these and she's going to look and say, wait a minute, here's what you had the first night, and now you've got all of these changes. Those are not minimal, those are major.
Well, the whole purpose of a continued public hearing is to continue making changes, so I would have to disagree with that.
Minimal, not major.
But who makes the call? I mean, I've seen this happen quite a bit in recent years, not just with zoning articles, but with regular town meeting articles, that the entire content of the article has not been published. And people have either handed a handout or made a motion. Who makes that call before town meeting? Who makes that call whether proper procedures have been followed?
Board of Selectmen.
And due notice has been provided.
The warrant comes under the Board of Selectmen, and that's an issue for nine years that I have tried to explain to them, that if they're not ready to go on, you don't have all the information. Every other town has all their information in the warrant. They have the money that's proposed. Some towns mail their warrants out. People know ahead of time what they're voting on. And for nine years, I've tried to get that point across, it just doesn't get across. Because what happens is, even though department heads know town meeting's coming up, I think at the closing of the warrant on that Thursday, we had maybe four articles ready, and all of a sudden that afternoon, the rest all came in. So they were all placeholders. All placeholders, without any preparation to knowing what they actually were looking for. And they will wait until, sometimes I don't get motions until 6 o'clock of town meeting night. It's frustrating, very frustrating. This is my last meeting, I don't know if I will continue. Because for nine years, if I can't get people to understand the proper way to put things on a warrant, I don't want to lay awake at night anymore, and that's what I do. Because I lay there at night thinking, you're expecting people to come to town meeting with very little notice, very little understanding of what the article is and vote on it. And that's not right. It's not right. But I think specifically that article to change the dimension. I mean, who knew? Until I got this Friday, I never even saw it. I mean, those are major changes, people should know. You look at even the lots that are included. It started out, the original newspaper article had, what, eight lots? And then at the first hearing that you had on August 13th, Selectmen Title Bomb or Chairman Title Bomb of the Redevelopment Authority, oh no, we took a vote, we changed it down to just the two lots at Tremont Nail. Then people brought up that that was spot zoning. Now I look at this tonight, and you've got lots that weren't included in the posting. You've got lots that were taken out. So I'm not sure you've got the two lots of Tremont Nail, you've got the store, the two houses, then you leave out the Fairing Tavern, then you jump to the.
At the request, at the request of the President of the Historical Society.
And you leave out the diner. Is that not spot zoning? That's not contiguous. So, I mean, here's another question that comes up. Can you do that? I thought when you zoned an area, it had to be all encompassing.
We worked all this out with Attorney Bowen last week. And further to the point.
You do need to present a map because these lot numbers mean nothing to people.
No, that's fair enough, informationally, that should be. You know, one of the whole purposes of holding the workshop meeting was to solicit public input. You know, one of the gentlemen in this room actually suggested, if this is about conferring benefits to people in the area, lot owners, you should talk to people across the street, you should do this. We've reached out to, I think, every lot owner that was included in the original layout, which included, you know, the whole recitation of lots you just went through. And what is included in here are the lots belonging to the people who are interested in being in here. We understood that the marijuana thing was controversial. I know when we were doing the bylaw in the spring to regulate the retail establishments and so on and so forth, and to set the zoning for that, we specifically asked one of the large landholders in the Business Development Overlay District whether they wanted to be included. And they frankly recoiled from it. And they were one of the property owners around the Tremont Nail. We did send an inquiry out to see if, once again, they wanted to be included. They didn't answer, so we were stuck with looking at what they had said before, which was, no, we don't want any part of marijuana zoning. So part of this process is, has been soliciting the public. I would strenuously disagree that the public hasn't been included in this process. I think we've bent over backwards to include the public in this process. That's what the workshop meeting was about, that's what continuing this hearing was about.
But had they been given everything that we were given tonight? Was this available to the people two weeks ago? It just got filed with the town clerk on the 11th. So that was not, the people at that meeting did not see this, Peter. So they don't know what's in here.
The people at the meeting don't know that there's been a couple of technical changes, some of which arose out of the meeting that they attended. So, you know, it's a chicken or egg argument.
Well, anyway.
Mr. Chairman, this is my personal feeling as a board member here. We've been talking about this for a couple of months. This is very centric around the marijuana, but so many other important points on the zoning have come up this evening. Counsel has given their opinion. We haven't had an opportunity to ask counsel about how that opinion was drawn. I don't see, I guess what I'm zeroing in on is if we push this through, in which I will vote against it because I think there's too many holes in it right now, push this through for this town meeting, gets rejected for two years, we're on a two-year hold.
It depends on the manner of which it's rejected. If it's, what's the terminology?
Indefinite postponement.
If it's indefinite postponement, it's.
That's a no vote.
But that's a two-year comeback. I don't think a further study is a two-year comeback. I don't think a no-action results in the same. If you voted it further study, you could designate the time at which time you have to issue a report, so you.
The proper wording so that it doesn't jeopardize legally would be refer it back to the planning board. And that eliminates the legal question.
So further study, is one of our possible recommendations is that we feel it needs to be referred back to the planning board for further study to be then re-presented at the spring meeting?
Yes.
This will prevent the two-year delay on it?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Don Jepson, Precinct 3. There's been a lot of good points made here by everybody. And, but, the situation is this. The town bought Tremont Nail. Bought it for 1.4 million, did not do due diligence, now has to put another 1.4 million in it. There's a lot of technicalities in the zoning and the details here, technical questions. But I think overall, the voters know what is going on because they've reached out to them saying that, you can call it spot zoning, call it what you want, that basically they're changing the, the intent is to change the zoning to allow somebody in there, not just marijuana, but the marijuana is a driving force, as they said in the paper, the elephant in the room. And without that, there is no stream of income that's going to substantially help the town out of the hole we're in with Tremont Nail. And I think the average person knows, without getting in all the technical details, that that's what this is about. And I think if it doesn't go to town meeting, then what's going to happen is these people are going to go elsewhere, and then it's going to be moot because, believe me, there are a lot of empty buildings around this state and in Connecticut, too. So that's all that really the town is offering here, is an empty building. And it has been suggested that maybe we could move the building, that you could suggest another location. Why these people are still here, it amazes me. But somehow they came here knowing that it's close to Boston. They know somebody that was in the area and they suggested the building. And why they zeroed in on this building that's, borders on a flood zone is kind of a question in my mind, too. But on the other hand, I think it's an opportunity for the town to generate some money. You know, you can sit and debate whether you like marijuana or you don't like marijuana. I'm not a user myself. But when it comes right down to it, it comes down to economics. These people came here because they thought this was a welcoming community. That was part of it, I assume. And the other part was, they identified that building as being an interesting location to be. And so I would encourage you to try to work through the details, and I'm not minimizing what's being said. But I see it as an opportunity and the town could certainly use this. They're not putting other marijuana processors through this. As you said, it's been approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals to do a processing plant in the basement of a strip mall in town. So, that's the way it is, thank you.
Howard Smith, West Wareham. Over the years, Wareham has had a lot of problems with things like this. I mentioned it at an earlier meeting, I almost wanted to mention it early at this meeting. We have had people come into this town for years. I have been to town meetings, I've been to workshops, you call them whatever you want to call them. People have come into this town and promised the world. They don't deliver, plain and simple. Wareham is in the problem that we're in today because of that. And I'll make it short and sweet. We, agencies, boards, and so forth, have made a lot of problems, a lot of mistakes over the years. So by going forward with all of the mistakes that you've been presented with tonight, two wrongs are not going to make it right, plain and simple.
Jim Manese, Cranberry Highway. A lot of information flying around here tonight. And I was glad to see that they increased the lots for the overlay district. I have to agree with the moderator, though. You should just kind of, if you're going to make an overlay district, just overlay it. Because, you know, all Wareham Village ones under there, and anybody that doesn't want to utilize the increased zoning benefits don't have to. So to that point, I was glad to see that, that they increased it somewhat. There's still a couple missing. The Historical Society didn't want the overlay over the building. I don't know how it affected one way or the other. Doesn't change what they're doing. I have to commend the Redevelopment Authority for trying to do something, hurriedly or not, and trying to grab a way to come up with some financing for the hole, you know, we just keep throwing more money into. You know, I actually went and, I was wasting some time and looked at the deed when we transferred the property and the statement of the proponents was in there, which was much, you know, for historical preservation and, you know, the vision, a vision statement, just like we have a vision statement there. That's not, that's not a law, that's just like a direction. These are things you could do, it doesn't mean we have to do it. Master plan, it's not that you have to do it, those are suggestions of things that you could do. I think there is probably quite a bit of work that would need to be done. Mr. Bianco mentioned he owned, he had a business at 3119 Cranberry, which is near where the, I think it's Teabear is opening up their processing facility where they're going to do the extraction, I think it's called ethanol extraction again. And the only person there, I was there, the only one that got up and spoke was Mr. Jepson. And he just inquired, what you're going to be doing with process. Was another person there to say, I think it's going to affect my property values, I think it's going to smell, or anything else? I don't understand why not, maybe because of the way it's advertised. So, overlay district's not a bad idea. A lot of people hung up on the explicit use of marijuana in that area, but not so much so up on Cranberry Highway, even though it could bring property values down, could. Nobody's ever really done a study on that, that I've seen. I haven't spent the time to look it up myself. I can't tell you which way to go or not to go. But I think, again, I think the Redevelopment Authority is trying to do something and you have to come up with a plan and a vision on how you're going to achieve these goals to improve the property so people want to use it. A lot of it's, you know, a lot of it's not in very good shape. And, I don't know, you can come up with something, it would be nice, maybe another direction. Maybe the people, again, I have to agree, too, that there are places in town that this company could probably look to rent or buy, which are already zoned, were zoned on the marijuana uses. It's a great geographic location because of the proximity to the highways. I mean, and, you know, you can zip up to Boston, you can head west, you can go to Rhode Island or Connecticut if they ever pass them, and you can get up to New Hampshire, so, I mean, it's just a quick use. It makes sense, I mean, just where we're located is good for a lot of industry and business. So that's about all I have to say on it. Again, nobody showed up at the ZBA. I was there, I didn't need to say anything. The only one that spoke and inquired about the process was Mr. Jepson. Nobody said anything. Thank you.
I don't know if you want me to say something in conclusion here because I know the hour is getting late here and.
On 463.1, it says, "Uses allowed by special permit by the Board of Selectmen and other designated, in accordance with Section 1460 of the zoning bylaw." That, not this particular bylaw, it's the zoning bylaws in general.
That's the one where it says that the Board of Appeals...
It should say "the" zoning bylaw, not "this" zoning bylaw.
Well, it's to be part of this zoning bylaw.
The intention was that it's referring to 1460 in the current zoning bylaw, which deals with the Board of Appeals and the Planning Board being the special permit granting authorities.
It's the only reference to special permits in the administration section of the bylaw. And the state law allows that any designated Board of the town can be a special permit granting authority.
Well, I'll just make one observation here. I'm not going to disagree with every point Charlie brought up tonight. I don't know that they would, that the WRA will vote to change every point that he brought up tonight, but I will make one general observation. The perfect is the enemy of the good. And the whole purpose of, of trying to do this and trying to get this, these people to locate here is to be able to inject some money into the Tremont Nail factory. So far, we've invested 1.4 million to buy the place. And by the way, that was over my objection, I'm an environmental attorney, I knew what they were going to find out there. We now have before town meeting, an article to spend 1.43 million, or up to 1.43 million, to clean the place up. So now we're up to 2.83 million if that gets approved. We put, I think, 220,000, was it, into the roof? It's somewhere between 200 and 250, so now we're up over 3 million. We voted in the spring to put $200,000 in to stabilize the freight building. So now we're up to close to 3.25 million. We've got $50,000 allocated from our Community Development Block grant. So push, 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 push for this property. As I said at the public workshop meeting, I don't know how, as a selectman, I can endorse continuing to go back to town meeting time after time after time for this property. So to my way of thinking, this was necessary almost to try to generate some, some cash flow fairly quickly. I agree that the, the need to do this quickly perhaps resulted in a proposed bylaw that again is less than perfect. But the overall intention of the Redevelopment Authority is to try to get some money in to this property so that we can then in turn start meeting the goals of the Vision Plan. I'll go back to when we bought the property in 2004. I think by 2006, the town created a Tremont Nail Master Plan Committee. And I know Selectman Slavin was on it. The one proposal they were able to generate was an affordable housing project that the selectmen at the time killed. Nobody else has shown a whole heck of a lot of interest in that property. And nobody else has, you know, managed to attract anybody that is willing to put this kind of money into the town coffers. So I would ask the Board to hold off on a recommendation, wait until the Redevelopment Authority has some time tomorrow to process what we've heard tonight, see which things we could, concerns of Charlie we can address without, you know, drastically modifying the article, keeping the original intent here, and to represent the article to you for a confirmatory vote before your meeting, at town meeting, because I know you're, you're going to meet. Are you planning to meet tonight of town meeting?
We usually do.
Yeah, okay. I wanted you to say that, not me, so. So that's, that's what I would ask the Board to do, to hold off. See if we can address some of the concerns these gentlemen had, I don't see why not. And, and once again, to the notion that there hasn't been public process, there hasn't been notice. I mean, just go on Facebook for God's sakes, there have to be 5,000 comments about this. The people know more or less what it is, what we're trying to do out here. And, you know, I'm actually heartened by some of the comments I see out there, by quite a few of the comments. I don't think people are going to go to town meeting and not know what the overall gist of this is.
I think at this point, you, you've put a lot of work into this. And I don't think anybody wants to see it thrown away, but you do run the risk of a bad report back from the AG, which...
We've been in consultation with Town Council every step of the way here. So to the extent that anybody's got concerns about what the AG might say, or this, that, and the other thing, I would refer them to Town Council.
Well, to finish, I think if you could correct some of these shortcomings and either by striking a paragraph or taking out some of the language through an amendment or some such thing.
Mr. Chairman, we can't add to it, we can only make it less.
One of the things you, one of the things that was brought out, 462.4, when a building permit is issued, shall no, the underlying provisions will no longer be applicable. You could strike that and work on that in the future. That would be an easy amendment or if you wanted to change the special permit granting authority, you could adjust that. I'm pretty sure that the marijuana production is going to face some sort of amendments at some point at town meeting. Charlie?
Just a couple of points. I don't intend any... How do I put this? I'm not sure how much experience the Housing Authority has in writing zoning bylaws. It's tough enough when you've been around it for a number of years to write something that is, makes common sense. But to ask you as a Board to make a final decision on changes that are made in such a fashion, to me, is totally unfair. I've been around this business for the better part of my life. Zoning bylaws, once they are passed, have a life of their own. And this is flawed. I'm not saying that some changes couldn't be made, which would help it out. I don't intend to get into a debate about the marijuana aspect of it, the town has spoken. I have my own personal feelings about it. But I'm trying to set that aside and look at the bylaw as a whole and what you're being asked to make a recommendation on. And it's not just that, I realize that's what's driving it. And I, I think it's too bad that it is driving it. But nevertheless, there are other aspects of this whole thing that have repercussions throughout the rest of it. Once this is passed and it gets into the document of the zoning bylaw, people will be coming into town as they always have, asking Ken for a copy of the bylaw that is current so that they can look through it and find out what their requirements are to do certain things. And the more it gets done without a thorough investigation of the bylaw as a whole and how various things that get put into it impact other things without a thorough investigation, only makes it confusing and difficult. You've seen it already on a couple of projects that we've sat together on. How difficult it is to make decisions when things aren't right. And that's the concern that I have. Because I want to see the town improve, I want to see it get better. But I don't want to see it done without the proper investigation and giving you folks the proper time to be able to make deliberation on a bylaw, which is very important. Not only in terms of what the selectmen are trying to do with Tremont Nail, which is a costly endeavor from day one, but what it means to the future. And where all of your effort is going to have to go in the future in this, so.
I just have to echo what Mrs. Smith said also. I haven't slept well for the many days, worrying, trying to make the right decision, come to the right decision for this. And I feel I have a gun to my head. What's going to happen next? The town meeting is what, next Monday or Tuesday?
Monday.
What happens before the meeting? We're going to gather there and make a decision about something? And again, I appreciate, and I know the hard work you've put into it, and I understand all the reasons that the town got itself into such a mess financially. And you're doing your best to try to bail us out to some degree. But I think it's, I don't think we know enough or have had enough information and study. And the other thing I would say, Mr. Chairman, we leave all the discussions to be, to take place here at this table. And then we go home and we don't follow up on anything until we come back to the following meeting. I recommend we consider having, for such important considerations, I would have happily sat with, you know, with the people that are trying to do something and, and, and have a chance, an opportunity to make decisions with some thought, rather than sitting here trying to make these really major decisions with such impact. So I don't know what to, what do we do next at the, before the town meeting? What are we supposed to do?
I mean, I would just harken back to the fact that we did bring this article to the Planning Board, you know, two months ago. And, you know, we did continue the public hearing to this time. But, you know, again, this, this process hasn't taken place in the dark. I mean, I, I would be loath to tell the Planning Board how to fulfill its responsibilities. I don't think that's my purview. I have a hard enough time figuring out what the Redevelopment Authority ought to be doing. I don't need to get involved in other Boards in that fashion. But we have followed what has become the normal process, and I know Madam Moderator isn't happy about it. But, you know, this is what happens with these articles typically. Again, as your chairman just told you, when I asked, you know, will there be a meeting Monday night? Well, there usually is. And you wouldn't be having a meeting if you weren't considering something that had to be changed, or a proposed change, or something or other that was coming before you that night so that you could make your final recommendation to town meeting. It's not that this is unprecedented. And, you know, I know Charlie's participated in that process because he'll probably be sitting there with you, you know, giving his thoughts next Monday night, so.
With all due respect, the only thing that we saw that was of any significance was this particular document that came out at the end of last week. Anything before that is not anywhere near like what this one is. How can you make a decision on something on one week, get another document the next week and expect you to make a decision on it? I don't think that's fair, Peter.
No. I, I would disagree that, that we, you know, that this is some kind of an ambush, and I'll just leave it at that.
I don't think it's an ambush.
That's not intent, Peter, not at all, Peter. I told you with full respect, Peter, I know how hard you work. But by the same token, at our meeting last Tuesday, there was tacit agreement that there would be a sunset clause. And, and my concern is, if, if there is no sunset clause, this guy's not going to move out in five years. He's going to be there in 10, 15, 20 years. Fine, we're making money. What does, how does that relate to the rest of the town? Maybe fine, but we haven't had the time as a body here to, to analyze that. And frankly, and I, this is new. And I, when I got this, the first thing I looked for was, where's the sunset clause? It isn't here. So I'm, I'm looking potentially, what's my role here? To do the best I can for the town. And yes, a short-term need for cash is important for the town. But is it in its best interest? That's where I'm not persuaded.
Fair enough.
With all due respect, okay, Peter?
We'll work on this again tomorrow night.
One thing I want to point out is that, and I've been doing zoning for 30 years. I know the risks and the pitfalls and the, and the soft spots in zoning and how you can be an issue. But I want to point out that that isn't the only thing that controls the use of this property. The town has, as the owner of the Tremont Nail Factory, has the right to negotiate the developer's agreement, something that goes beyond zoning. And can be much more specific about details, about how they could use the property and how they have to provide benefits to the town in the use of that property. So a developer's agreement is a much stronger control even, or equal to zoning. And it's still a step that has to take place beyond the passage of the zoning district.
I, I don't think the, the intent of the document is bad, other than the fact that I don't particularly agree with the marijuana facility in itself. But I think we've just run out of time. I don't think we have enough time to refine this to the point where I would feel comfortable presenting it. You know, it's, it's like anything else, if it's not ready, it's not ready. And I just don't feel that it's ready. And I don't, I mean, he, there could be a ninth inning miracle and by next Monday it is ready, but at this point, I, I just don't see it.
Mr. Chairman, a few minutes ago, you made the assumption that your Board would be willing to hold off until next Monday. I think in all fairness to the rest of your Board, you should ask for their opinion. Are they ready to make a decision tonight, or would they be willing to wait? I, I mean, I think that has to be a Board's decision, not your decision.
To that, I would respond, I don't think that I'm sitting here asking for anything that hasn't been asked by myriad people before.
In many, in the past, we have been faced with the problem of having a public hearing on a zoning bylaw, finding issues with it, correcting it, and having enough time to get a public hearing in, again, to show the changes. Many times, we've met on the night of town meeting to accomplish this with the final approval or, or tabling of the, of the article. You're right, if the Board does not wish to take this up on Monday, then the Board should make a motion. But I think, my own opinion is in deference to what the work has been done. You know, if you can get the changes to the members quick enough and they're willing to review them and make the call at that time, it's...
It also has to be to the moderator, not at 7 o'clock. I have to approve it. I have to have time to go through it and see what the changes are.
I would agree.
It's not going to happen at 6:30 or 7 o'clock.
There won't be any changes made Monday night.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask kind of a question? Are you saying that a developer's agreement could override the decision of this Board? Is that what was implied there? It would be more stringent and reinforce the decision of this Board?
It could be more stringent and reinforce the decision of the Board.
Okay. So I'd like to propose to allow the appropriate amount of time for changes. I, I don't think that I will be ready to make a decision Monday night. I, I just, I, I don't have a high level of confidence that the changes are going to be made. We represent the town on this matter and, you know, it will, it will come back to us for that last-minute decision. And I think zoning is far too important. These are legacy decisions that affect multiple capacities within the town. These, these are not one-off decisions, these are until the next time they're changed or improved. They are acting as guidelines for this town. So that's my two cents, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Any other thoughts? Excuse me. Was that a thought or was that a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to delay the decision-making on the rezoning until the spring of 2019.
Well, if the article will still be forward and considered at town meeting, what, what your, your role is here is to, you know, hold a public hearing and make a recommendation, just not to kill the article.
A second. I'm just looking at the actual...
Do you have it, the warrant, article number?
Why do I always have trouble finding it? 14 is it?
I have to write voter not to accept the motion. I don't see it until 6:30, I want to accept it. I need time.
So, this says, inserted by the Board of Selectmen at the request of the Wayham Redevelopment Authority. So, I...
Yeah, it's raining.
Is that rain?
It's wind.
So, are we making this proposal, or is the Board of Selectmen making this?
Redevelopment Authority, you would make the, your own recommendation, you'd come down, probably the moderator would ask for, the planning board, your recommendation most likely, would be the, the motion would be read, spoke by the Redevelopment Authority.
Let's see how they usually write it. So, are you making, back to your motion?
So...
Your recommendation that you would like made at town meeting floor is...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my recommendation is for you to represent this board at town meeting to recommend a further study into spring town meeting, is to not jeopardize a two-year delay in changing of this zoning.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Discussion, the only thing that I see that is pressing, and this is, is your lease arrangement with the marijuana processing at this particular time, unless you have something else in the works that we don't know about, that is, that is...
I mean, we've had other interests, I would say that this is the prime, this is the big one.
This is the one that submitted a full proposal to us. There have been others that have come in, there's a distillery brewery business out of New Jersey that has international backers, that's interested in, in the site, but has not come forward with a proposal. There's a pottery studio that was mentioned that has come forward and submitted a, an informal proposal for use of the site. And there's an event promoter who has identified the freight building as one that he would like to, to use for his, his purposes, but has, it's still an informal process at this time.
But I didn't, no one of these people are specific to the steel building, just various buildings on the site.
Correct.
Well, I think that's the only thing that delaying this would affect, is they may not be around in the spring.
Right.
Well, I don't know if that's a true statement, if they're not here to represent that it would affect their decision-making, or speculating it would. But if we, we gave them a promise of it'll go to vote in, in the spring after further study, they may hang out.
That could well be, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, just so everybody's aware, I mean, like I say, I'm not particularly crazy about it, but...
Well, is your suggestion to me then, to essentially gut the article and just come up with a rezoning so that somebody can go into the steel building for marijuana? I mean, talk about spot zoning, that's probably the ultimate spot zoning.
Even, for me anyway, even if you rewrote the article specifically to target the marijuana people, I would, I would still have a problem with it.
Well, I, I think that's the most contentious part of the article, you know?
I, I think it just, it just is the wrong application for the, the overall vision for that piece of property. The money sounds great, you know, I mean, money, money is great.
I think we're all on the same page on that point, and I don't think anybody's particularly crazy about it, but I'm just saying that delaying action to the spring, which is not unreasonable, would probably have an impact on that more than anything else.
I, from my own opinion...
Just putting it out there, just so we say it out loud, so everybody knows.
I agree, from, from my own opinion, I, I personally am willing to take that risk of losing that tenant, rather than having our name associated with a bad decision.
Okay, the motion is to recommend further study. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Upstaid, so moved.
5:00.
Yeah. I will support the board. I guess that's moot point on your changes as far as we go, but I think...
Well, we'll still work on it, and I'll submit it to you, and should you decide to reconsider Monday night, you have that opportunity as well.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If we did that, George, in all fairness, we probably wouldn't have to hook up until 6:00, to give clear time to review with the meeting decision, to jump on board.
If there are any changes, they'll be submitted to the moderator this week, we're not gonna ambush her with something at 6:00 on Monday night.
I'd also recommend they get posted on the public website, though, so that the public has the opportunity to get that.
Next is Article 16, amend section 1119.4.10 off-premises directional signs, well, amend section 1122 violations and penalties, delete 1133, and amend section 1135 political signs.
You have the, in the materials, you have the zoning bylaw, the, the way the changes are, are in bold, that in section 1119.4.10 off-premise directional signs is to be displayed on privately-owned property with permission of the property owner, and the restriction is that it not be placed on traffic signs. Under violations and penalties, oh, section 1122, the addition is in bold, in addition, such fines shall be attached to property tax bills by the town treasurer when submitted by the director of inspectional services. So, the fines for signed violations are attached to property tax bills.
Is there any due process associated with that?
I was just gonna ask that question.
Yes, you can appeal.
To who?
You can appeal to basically...
Can't hear you, Mr. Chairman, can't hear you.
Evening, outside the chair of the Board of Selectmen. You can...
You can appeal the same way. What's happened is, was this recently, through the director of finance of the town, the town has taken a different tact for different violations for inspectional services, et cetera. What happens is, we normally find people, they go to court, they don't show up, the magistrate puts things off, year, two, three years go by, nothing happens, so the town has decided the only way they can collect and really enforce the rules and regulations that people realize they're gonna have to observe them is to go through the tax bills, and it's already in place right now. You may not like it, Mike, but it's...
Yeah, 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 it's terrible, terrible.
Well, it's already, it's already in place, Michael. Thank you.
And then, on off-premise signs, 1133, it's to be deleted in its entirety because it's a repeat of 1119.4.10, and then, under 1135, political signs, the additions are, that such signs shall be, may be placed up to 30 days before election day, and again, as repeating 1119.4.10, that such signs are not allowed on town, state, county, or utility company properties.
So, somebody apparently puts up their yard sale sign, say a tenant puts up a yard sale sign improperly, and the owner of the property's gonna get $250 taxed to their tax bill.
George, that scenario is possible, obviously. I think the reason for the changes are basically that there are yard sales, et cetera, that go up everywhere, and the reason being is technically you can't put a sign up on property unless you own the property owner, allows it no matter what, so it's just following the rules and regulations. The political sign changes, that are conformed to the federal laws where they only can do certain restrictions on political signs. So, this piece here is, if you go around town, you'll see there's signs stapled to telephone poles, to utility poles, everywhere, they don't take them down, et cetera. So, they're just trying to, again, find a way to clean up the mess that's everywhere right now. Again, you know, if you're, if you're a tenant, you know, you're supposed to ask your, the owner of the property if you can do something, you don't have those rights, George. I know you're laughing, but it's a simple fact. It's either that, or you have no rules, everything's wide open, and you go back to zero, which is what's happening now. Thank you.
George, can we modify this article?
Well, I think they're looking for a recommendation again.
I'd like to make, make a motion that we strike, in addition, such fines shall be attached to property tax bill. I think that's a bunch of garbage, I really do. I don't know how the hell you select that, got that stuff in there, Ellen, but...
It's not me, Michael, it's already was put in a year ago by the Director of Inspection Services.
Well, that, that's another problem, but we can take that up on another day, but I think that article should be modified, that should be struck and taken out of there.
Mr. Chairman, are they asking this board to put this in front of town meeting?
They're looking for a recommendation from...
Request of Planning and Community Development Direction.
That's me.
Mr. Chairman, any zoning article, no matter what, how it goes through, really is supposed to go through the planning board, as we all know.
Yep.
That's number one. The planning board is supposed to hold public hearings and take care of that. This article here, the, Ken cannot put it on his own, the Board of Selectmen can't put it on his own, has to have a public hearing. As the moderator knows, I've been very unhappy about articles coming forth not complete, et cetera, we've talked about it back and forth, it just doesn't seem to work out, people can't get the numbers together, et cetera. So, at the end of the day, it is your responsibility to make a recommendation, no matter what, but these articles really should be coming through you, which means, if you don't, probably will like, you hear what I have to say, but you need to step up as well. Ken, you know, you're...
Honestly, this came out of the blue. You know, when we had at least the redevelopment authority and the other ones were here in August, and we're told, and then all of a sudden this popped up.
I think Ken's, you can ask Ken, I think he sat there for a few months.
So, to say, we didn't even know this was being worked on, like, we have to put our name on it.
Then you'll have to ask Ken, because we did, the Board of Selectmen did recommend that Ken look at the signed bylaw to update some of the areas where there were some issues. And that's what I'm getting at, the bottom line is that I was on the planning board, and if you know, I did do the signed bylaw originally, I did do the TDR, so it's up, it's up to the board. I'm sorry if I'm preaching to you guys, but this is really your job, not mine. Thank you.
State law requires that the planning board make a recommendation on all zoning articles before town meeting.
I have a question. This is public hearing, I guess, um, maybe I missed in the reading and wasn't listening very closely to Ken, but did you strike the sentence for maximum of 18 hours for such one-day events as yard sales, open houses, road races, et cetera? I mean, I think putting out a sign for 18 hours is virtually impossible, you're asking somebody, we just put out 30 race signs, and you want me to go back in, within 18 hours and take them all down, and then put them out again for 18 hours? Is, is that...
Who are we gonna find for the Pan-Mass Challenge signs that are on telephone poles and are still out there? Who do we find for that?
I mean, I, I didn't, I wasn't paying close attention, so I don't know if it's still in there or not, but if it is in there, I mean, I think that is something that's unreasonable. I mean, if I'm gonna put out a yard sale sign, I'm gonna put it out the day before the yard sale, hoping that people would see it and come the next day. I'm not gonna put it out for 18 hours and take it down, because then they're not gonna see that I'm having a yard sale, and trust me, when my husband goes hunting next month, I will be having a yard sale.
I just had it in my hand, huh?
We need humid tonight.
What happens, Mr. Chairman, if this gets...
Oh, okay, I see it.
If this gets shot down at town meeting, it's a two-year old?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I, I think just, just based on the property penalties alone, it will get shot down. I, I think this needs to be looked at and maybe pushed off to the spring.
Well, I don't think it will, because it doesn't affect most people, especially most people at town meeting. They don't, they don't put signs up, they don't care, it's not gonna affect them, they're gonna pass it.
That's right, and to respond to what Claire Smith had said, moderator said, the, you take out the phrase "for a maximum of 18 hours," because I think, as well, I mean, lost pets, I think is more than a one-day event. Hopefully not, but potentially so. Hopefully not, but potentially so.
Yes, sir.
Howard Smith, from West Lamb. I have a question regarding the 18 hours. Is that contiguous? I go out on a Thursday, put my sign up by nine hours, and then go out on Friday and put it up by nine hours. Is that allowable?
You've got too much time in your hands, Alan.
You've got a yard sale.
Never see a yard sale in my yard.
And again, the only thing changing in that paragraph is adding privately-owned property with the permission of the property owner.
Right, but we're modifying this subsection 10 off-premise directional signs. And a problem has been identified in the wording the way it is.
And you're adding traffic signs to the list of what you can attach, can't attach to.
That's correct.
Is this $250 per offense? So, if you got five yard sale signs out there?
Yeah, and each day is a new offense. Gotta make a lot of money at yard sale.
Thirty minutes left in recording time.
How much?
Thirty.
That's about right. So, I would say if you wanted to alter the 18 hours, it would have to be in the form of amendment.
George, just so you understand, that was one of the changes, so therefore...
That's why I said it would have...
...the change in the original side bylaws, that's been in place for years.
Voice isn't hearing very well from back here, Alan.
You're a shock.
The $250 fine is not something that wasn't added, that preexists. And just so you know, and also, the 18 hours has been sitting as well. I think, what's the, the date of that particular signed bylaw change? 2014, something like that?
Something like that.
2013. So, this has been in place four, five years, it's not new. It was left there. We didn't make, the changes were made were just to clean up the signs that are being illegally put up everywhere, that don't get cleaned up. That's, that's all these changes are. The other pieces you have, if you want, you can make a recommendation and see if there's an amendment on the floor to eliminate those two pieces, but they've been there for almost five years.
Have you ever exercised the penalty of $250?
Never. We never exercised anything, because we don't enforce. Because the time, by the time we go to collect it, we spent more than $250 in time for the Director of Inspection Services, and the time for town council to go, et cetera. That's why they changed the whole process, because the process, the magistrates, when you go in there, they don't even wanna talk to you. They blow the court cases out, so people know they don't have to do anything. It's a, it's a lousy way to have to run a business. I know, Mikey, he doesn't like it, but I don't like it either. But this is the society we live in today.
What would be the appeals process?
Well, the appeal process, again, if it goes to court, you can always go back to court and appeal the fine, because you're, it's on the tax bill. You can appeal your bills. I'm not sure you're gonna have a good chance of winning, because probably, Claire, you have to go to a town council for an appeal like that?
What's that?
Town council be the, the judge on an appeal on a tax bill. I'm not sure the legal, but it's not easy, if you're asking.
Is it, could I ask, is it actually another column on the total amount due for that?
Yeah, it would be a separate bill. You could, you can pay your regular bill and not pay that, and then you can fight that. You have a right to appeal all your bills.
So, the abatement process would not be what you would follow, it would be something else?
Yes.
A lien would be placed on your property.
Yeah, you'd have, basically, it's a lien to give you a little bit of enforcement, try and collect the money. It'd be a separate item, Mikey, if you had a betterment fee on your tax bill.
And there's a cost associated with getting a lien released.
Yes.
Yeah, I have, as moderator, I have to agree with Alan that you couldn't delete it, because what it says is to see if town meeting will vote to amend Article 11 signs, and it's specific in what it's adding, so you really couldn't, even with an amendment, take it out.
Yeah. I apologize, because I really didn't notice the 18, 18 and a half hours, I wasn't looking at that. We were looking strictly at the way you can put signs.
So, I think we just got a confession, I'm not sure, so get your fines ready.
It's all okay. Thank you all.
Thanks, Alan. What do you thought?
It passed five years ago with this fine? Is that, is that what you're saying? Five years ago, the people aware him said the fine's fine? So, it's just a matter of the collection method? Yeah. Unfortunately, I, I don't, just listening to the important issues at this town meeting, I hope this doesn't turn into a big time suck like the shopping cart thing.
Well, most zoning articles are emotional anyway, we're at a town meeting before, as Ken probably can tell you, dealing with town politics, and, you know, certain things hit people the wrong way.
I'm not in favor of putting it on the tax bill. Other than that, I'm fine.
So, we can delete that, we can make it less, right? But we're changing existing law?
We can't, they said that we can't delete that. There's gotta be a way we, well, we have to go back and rewrite it, or repropose it, get rid of that?
You go back with the spring, Michael, to change it.
On the initial, on the original article? Check mark next to that one.
I'll make a motion to push this article to the spring meeting, so it can be revised properly. I'll second that.
Discussion? Are there other things you want to address in the signed bylaw?
We, you, you've already noted the removal from the tax bill?
Well, if you're gonna, you know, that would be my objection to this, but, I mean, if you want to further study it, then...
Okay, so...
The board should go through the entire bylaw and see if there's any objections in there.
Yeah.
We've been made aware of problems. Maybe there's some others in there that we don't see.
So, amend my motion to make a recommendation at town meeting by the chair for further study, and push this off to the spring town meeting, so that we can research first...
Because, wasn't that the same motion?
Yeah, so we can research any further discrepancies here, or concerns. I'll amend my second.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed? Abstained? What else we got?
That should be it.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry I didn't speak up at the right time, when we were ending the discussion on the Tremont Nail Factory. What will be our role between now and the spring?
If it does get, if it does get further studied, because it'll still be on the warrant, still be voted on whether, you know, with our, with or without our, whether they follow our recommendation or not. There should be an active role on creating an overlay district bylaws and...
To Mr. Slavin's point, the board is recommending this, we should have some participation in the process.
When the other overlay district was created, there was many workshops and input. Granted, the, the proponent of the workshop did most of the work. The planning board was very much involved in, right through the whole process, so. Again, we should probably do some workshops on that also, so that we're aware what's in it, and we can see the pitfalls that we face.
We raised a number of concerns tonight, but we shouldn't just walk away now without a plan of participating with the Redevelopment Authority or independently, but not within the context of the master plan. But I, I think it, I've noticed in the past year and a half, that we will discuss a subject at the table, and then we go home and nothing happens. Because we all go back to work, or we go to dinner, or whatever, but I would ask if the board thinks that, or feels that we should establish, maybe not tonight, but in the very near future, subcommittees that are assigned the task of working with the other boards of the town, to address these issues that are of concern, rather than laying back.
Let it languish.
And, you know, public workshops, all of that is very helpful when you're generating stuff like this.
How does that happen? How are these arranged?
If we do it as a subcommittee with, say, the Redevelopment Authority, you know, they could attend their meetings or their workshops, they could come in here and present a workshop, and, and keep everybody on the same page, so we don't have these last-minute corrections.
Are they discussions that have to be held in public, or is...
It's a publicly posted meeting, yes. Even though it's less than a quorum of us or them, well, they, if it's a meeting, they'll have a quorum anyway.
What about the idea of having liaisons to other boards?
Yeah. I mean, there has to be continuity and input, and, and it's been absent.
Well, I think...
I definitely wondered what the role of the planning board is when other agents, other, I thought, asked myself, why is the redevelopment authority making planning decisions? Excuse me, maybe it's in their purport, but we're, we're kept out of it. And I just think it's not fruitful for us to be last-minute quarterbacks.
Yeah, if, if this was something that was collaborative, we probably could have produced a, a document that was presentable. One of the things that would help, too, would be not to have public hearings too early. In other words, build a consensus, get the document put together where everybody is in agreement with what will be presented to town meeting. Once that's done, then advertise, file it with the town clerk, and then you won't have so many iterations that all of them give town moderator forty fits, because she's got to go back and look at it to see whether or not it makes sense, or whether the Attorney General will approve it. So, the workshops are great ideas, but don't get into the public hearing process until you're ready to. That would be helpful.
Well, I think everybody, you know, the proponents had the intention of, of, you know, having a viable article prior to the public hearing.
I'm sure, but until, until everybody is on board...
You have to get your placeholders in so early, it kind of...
There's nothing wrong with having a placeholder, but that doesn't come for quite a ways in the, in the process, the way I understand it. And there's no reason for getting something official into the town clerk until you're sure that you've got something that's gonna go forward. There's multiple iterations, and multiples submittals to the town clerk. If, if it doesn't get advertised that way, it's like it's been suggested tonight, nobody knows what you're voting on. I felt it a little confusing, even though I wasn't involved in the direct process of trying to see it all, but if this one, which we got recently, was what was gonna go forward, that should have been one of the first things that came before the board, and you could detail out the things that were problems with that, iron that out, then you would've been ready to go. But it just came in bits and pieces, but it was part of a public hearing process that was advertised way back in August. So, you held your hearings early, and now you've got something that's out there that is significantly different than what you first started with. That's all I'm trying to make a point, is don't do it too soon, that's all.
Well, I think that was the process we used. I mean, my mistakes, if, if I was responsible, how much responsibility I had for doing it in this particular fashion, but this was the process we used. We got out early in this, in the stage, as soon as the, the issues became clear of the uses, they were, they were there, and they couldn't take advantage of the WV1 zoning. And we still started to develop the bylaw. And in doing that, wanted to bring it forward to a public hearing, so that there'd be an open discussion about it, and we could have some of that input. Same reason for the workshop as well, to have an open discussion about the zoning with this idea of the marijuana being a, the marijuana production facility being a big part of this concept, and having this, having the discussion go along in this fashion. Sorry if it, if it...
We're trying to, to the best we can, all of us are, that rather, my view is that public hearings are not as productive as smaller group work think-tank meetings. What is the issue we want to deal with? Getting money into the Tremont Nail Factory property, or getting, creating some opportunity for revenue? Focus on, on these elements, but in a small circle, in a small group, public hearings with, with, that consume time with everybody participating in the open, who perhaps don't have all of the facts, I, I just, is it permissible to have work sessions that don't invite the public?
It's better to get those work sessions in, so when you go into a public hearing, you're conversing in what's in front of you.
Yes, yes.
You're prepared. I think that's the part we missed in this, hopefully.
And I think this is, this has been missing in many, in many of the development, of the projects that I've heard here, and I think we, we should be forming a, another group to deal with that, but, you know, submit something soon, but I just think, you know, you've got these good folks working their butts off to do something, and then we come along and we, we aren't working in synchronized way. So, I, I think smaller group meetings focused on the particulars that we have to solve would get us, you know, thank you, thanks for listening.
Good point. Well, Patrick will be throwing us out soon, so...
There's no recording left in 10 minutes, anyway.
Do you think we need a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Does that both public hearings?
What's that?
Both public hearings.
All of them.
All of them.
All of them. This is Bay Point.
Yes, Bay Point. Let's put in the...
We gotta fill in the numbers, and, and anybody here to make a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
That's the one. Second?
You got two of them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Propose?
Aye.
Aye.